Okay, good evening all. And welcome to the Carson City School District School Board Meeting. And let me get some things out of the way. It is now 6 o'clock. It's Tuesday, September 25th, 2018. We're in the C.R. Room, the community center. That's the time, date and place for the regularly scheduled Carson City School District School Board Meeting, of which will consist of two parts tonight. One is the workshop, and the second is the regular board meeting. And we'll start with the workshop, and we'll start with the agenda item number one. And Don, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got it. Agenda item number two, roundtable discussion among board members, staff and principals, and addressing the following topics. It's a presentation of 2018, 17, 18 Nevada School Performance Framework results for this Carson City School District. I see we have board members, I see we have staff, but I see, I don't see any principals.
Mr. President, members of the board, as you know, our S-Back results have come in. We've talked about those at length. We also have received our Nevada School Performance Framework results. And we have, we have done a lot of thinking, a lot of planning, we've held a lot of conversations. And I wanted to begin maybe our, our meeting tonight by talking about some of the things that we plan to do as district office that we believe will strengthen our position over time, and that will ultimately not only increase student academics, but also simultaneously increase the Nevada school ranking process as well for our schools. And none of this is new or different. A lot of this is common sense, it's things that we believe in as an organization. And three really pretty straightforward ideas here that will frame our work as we move forward. I learned recently that as our district started with the learner-centered model, especially as it applied to our Race to the Top grant, our secondary folks were pretty well taught and repeatedly given information about the learner-centered model. We have, I believe, expected that same to occur at our elementary level without having done some of the groundwork. And so, we will be spending more time with our elementary teachers, principals, and implementation specialists to make sure that they fully understand and are able to focus on the fundamental concepts as it applies to our learner-centered model. I think there's a definition of mastery that needs to occur, and so these are some very specific and basic things that we can do as we move forward. The second item is that individual student performance should guide instructional adaptations. Again, this is, this is what they teach us as teachers in our preparation programs. If we are truly going to be a learner-centered system, we have to be able to provide information that students need, and those things are based on our ability to know where those students are in their academic world. And so, we have to have some sort of system, some sort of tool or mechanism that allows us to understand where students are day to day as they go through their, their educational process. And we use Mastery Connect in our school district as that student data system. And so, in order for our principals, our district staff, and our teachers to know where individual students are, we have to be proficient at using that system. The third item is that we should be able to keep a very close eye on where our students are by seeing a correlation between the formative assessments and the performance that our students have in those assessments to our high-stakes tests. In order to have that occur, we've got to have a cognitive shift in rigor, and that needs to happen in our classrooms. Teachers must correctly understand and consistently use the standards, materials, and learning guides that are available through our district. One resource that I've learned of relatively, in the relatively past future is the K-12 ACT Academy. That process allows for teachers and principals to compare the kinds of things that are being given as information in the classroom against the kinds of questions that are asked on high-stakes tests. And this is for kindergarten through 12th grade, and I believe that that's a place where we have to spend some time. And we can look at the information that's being presented, that's been prepared, and apply that against our high-stakes tests. Principals obviously will monitor and strengthen classroom instruction on a regular basis. And as Mrs. Kima, myself, Dr. Delphin, and Mr. Hicks, other district staff go out and visit with our principals regularly, those will be topics of discussion as we come together and as we talk about the instructional practices in our district. So, this information will be given to our principals, it'll be discussed regularly when we meet monthly, and we will focus our efforts in moving forward and improving not only the academic opportunities for our student, but also, students, but also for our schools. So, with that, I know that Mrs. Kima and her staff have some things that they would like to share with you, and of course, we hope to engage with the trustees in this discussion this evening.
Before we go forward, let's go to these three items. Okay, this is the, what you're saying, this is the district involvement. And starting with the first one, you said the principals, LIs, teachers need to know and understand just what the learner-centered model is. Is that going to consist of the district of everybody that's in this room right now? So that includes Jose, A.J., and our three stars sitting here in front? I mean, you're all going to be involved in doing this, and what's the checkpoint? What's the monitoring to know that it's been done? I mean, is there, there going to be a schedule that you could bring back to the board to say, you know, this last month, this is what we did, and here's?
We could certainly do that, but I think what we're trying to accomplish, which has been really on the table since we started with our, since our race, with our Race to the Top, is to create a systemic process so that it's part of what we do. When people ask us, you know, what are our practices, this is something that we want not only district-level staff members to know and understand and be able to talk about, but I'm hoping that teachers and nutrition services folks and custodians are entrenched in this idea that our students are being given the information that they need so that they can be successful. And that's at a very basic, fundamental, visceral level, so that everyone is getting the kind of education that they need. And that takes a lot of work, and we recognize that and have learned that through our Race to the Top process. But I, but I don't think we've done a good job yet of explaining this to the elementary staff members, and that was an oversight on our part.
Well, I agree with you, the learner-centered model and the Race to the Top, we've got probably, probably the most powerful tool available to help, to help students, and we, yeah, maybe that's it, we, it's there, and I was talking earlier, the framework's there, but we just haven't, it hasn't become systemic. It's like we talk among ourselves, but it's not to where it should be with the teachers, students, parents, and this community of, of, just going forward, so. Okay, so then you just give periodic updates, you know, to the board, but we'll be asking questions, because if what you say happens now, and it is happening, we should see a pretty substantial turnaround with the next testing cycle. And I'm not saying that test for the sake of test, but we are imparting knowledge and standards for kids to be successful when they leave our school district, so. Anyway, with that, I'll let you guys take over.
And I do want to point out that the elementary folks did receive, they, all, all of our elementary teachers have been through a boot camp, a curriculum assessment and instruction boot camp. So I think that theoretically, they have the, the concepts of the learner-centered model, but I think the next step is to tie that to the instruction and making sure that that is happening inside the classroom. Like, I guess you could say it's taking the theory and putting it into practice.
But with that, I think what Richard said, the instructional, the information to know where the students are, which students need additional help, the intervention piece of this, I think that needs some work. And, you know, going forward, I, well, through this evening, I'd like to talk about the support team. We can have intervention with our teachers, but who gets directly to the kids' help? That's the big question in how, so.
And you know, and that's one of the things that I kind of think about is, you know, we've had so many years of these scripted programs in the district, which have, have really dumbed it down for the teachers. So we didn't have an effective math curriculum for a number of years, which hopefully last year, what we adopted is going to help fill that gap. But then also you have SFA, which is really scripted, and I think that what we need to look at is, in addition to the principals getting information about a boot camp or whatever, we're going to have to really focus on professional development for our teachers, because those math standards have changed quite a bit, and they're very, they go deep, and they go deep at very early grades, and how it all fits together in that progression is something that I think our teachers are really going to need some help developing those skills and that knowledge.
Okay, just continue.
Well, Dr. Medina is setting up. What we're going to do first is go over the Nevada School Performance Framework. This is only the second year that we've had these reports, and we want to provide the board an opportunity to ask questions and understand them so that you know what the schools are being evaluated on.
Okay, so I'm going to give you kind of a brief overview of the, kind of, the state star rating system. And first off, the star rating system, it's ESA-driven, so it's kind of like, tonight I'm going to go home, I'm going to get home late, my kids are going to get home late, I'm going to ask them where they want to go for dinner. And they could pick anywhere in the world, but they know better than to pick Chuck E. Cheese, because if they pick Chuck E. Cheese, my wife is going to shut that down. And that's kind of how the feds handled the star rating system. They say, okay, you guys can pick whatever it is that you want, but they're going to be in these categories. And so, these are the categories that are up there for elementary. And then in addition to those categories, they kind of get a little bit more fine-tuned and say, there are certain tests that you're allowed to use. You could use any test, but they have to be approved by the feds. So for elementary and middle school, we have to use smarter balance assessments, as well as our fifth and eighth grade science. And for high school, we're allowed to use the ACT for math and, math and English, but for science, they haven't approved the ACT for science yet, so we had to use the ACT in the course because that's what they had already approved. Along with these categories, there were two kind of state groups that were involved. So there's a technical advisory group that kind of looked at these measures and said, okay, these are the, the technical things that have to be in play. So like, in order to be rated, you have to have a subgroup of 10 or more students, because if you don't have that many statistically, it's not sound. The other group that was involved was there's policy groups around the state that kind of said, these are some things that have to be in the model. So there was a big group that lobbied for the ALPA assessment. The feds didn't require that to be in there, but we have a big English learner population, so those state policy groups said, these are some things that are non-negotiables, they have to be in there as well. And for the most part, most of the measures that are in here, all the ones that are related to assessment are pretty stable across districts. Everybody's doing them, them the same exact way, because we've been doing assessment for a long time. Others, and I'll talk about chronic absenteeism in a minute, it's left up to individual districts to calculate those chronic absenteeism numbers. So depending on who you have on your staff that has that technical ability, that consistency, I would say with Carson, Nye, Washoe, Clark, that consistency is pretty solid. We have the programmers to do it. Some of our other schools, that they're kind of doing the best that they can. In the future, the state hopes to audit some of those things, but as of right now, some of these data elements are district-reported. So in, in the star rating system, I'm going to go over some of the big pieces. So the first one we discussed last time, which is proficiency. So how many kids, what percentage of your kids are above a certain mark? And depending on how many of your kids are proficient, you get so many points. The next big one is what's called the median growth percentile, or MGP. So if the three of us up here, if we were, we had similar scores last year, and if we tested the year before that, we had similar scores then as well, we would become part of our own, we'd be a norm group. And so, this year when we test, if SuKima scored higher than everybody else, she would get a student growth percentile of 99%. Chad scored lower than everybody else, his growth percentile would be 1%. I score right in the middle, my SGP would be 50. The way they get the MGP is they take all of your SGPs for the entire school, they pick the one that's in the very middle, and that's your MGP. Depending on whatever score that is, you get X amount of points. Does that make sense, or? Okay, for AGP, that's called adequate growth percentile. So it kind of combines the proficiency and the MGP. So what that does is it goes back, it uses that same norm group, but it projects out three years. So, and it sees, are you on target to be proficient three years from now? And if you are, you kind of meet that mark. If you're not projected to be proficient, then the school wouldn't get points for that That closing the opportunity gap uses AGP. And the way that they use the AGP there is they look at your kids that weren't proficient the year before, and it looks to see, is that group of kids, are they on target to be proficient three years from now? ALPA uses the same concept, except instead of giving a three-year projection, they use a five-year projection. Are you going to be English proficient within five years? Yes or no? The chronic absenteeism, our numbers, if you looked from last year to this year, our numbers, they, they increase, which is a negative thing, but that increase was due to the way that the numbers were calculated. So in years past, things like early release days weren't taken into account. So, kids could miss the full half-day, but for an early release day, that should have been less time. So, like, say if the, let's say just for simplicity, the regular school day's 400 minutes, that means I'm allowed to miss 200. If an early release day was only 220 minutes, in the past, I was still allowed to miss 200 minutes, I only had to be there for 20. But with the changes in the model, it's calculated that school day is, it looks at each and every single day, and how many days the kids are actually receiving instruction. So it takes out, you don't get credit for kids walking in between classes, you don't get credit for lunch. So statewide, our numbers went up. If you saw the press release from the state, us and Douglas, the, the numbers are horrible statewide, but ours are a lot better than the rest of the state. For the secondary schools, for the middle schools, they also have academic learning plans. Pretty much everybody in the, the state has to have an academic learning plan of some sort, so that's kind of a, almost a freebie almost. They also have to meet seventh and eighth grade credit requirements. For the high school, they look at ninth grade, how many kids are earning their, how many aren't credit deficient going into 10th grade, and they also look at the graduation rate. Any questions, because I know I just threw a bunch of figures at you really quick?
This is the first year that the high schools have been rated.
So when we look at the, how are elementary stacked up to the rest of the state? So on the left is the distribution, how many one-star, two-star, all the way up to five-star for the state. For district Montessori, Empire, Fremont, Borderwick, and Mark Twain were two-star schools. Seliger and Fritsch were three-star schools. The schools that are not rated fall into two different categories. There's quite a few of them that ha, don't have enough kids in order to do calculations, so their numbers, they'll take the numbers that they have this year, next year, or at the end of the year when kids test, they'll add them together, and hopefully they'll have enough numbers then. There's also some schools in there like Pacollo and Washoe that are serving special populations that don't have ratings. At the middle school level, Carson Middle and Eagle Valley were both identified as three-star schools. And the way that the state looks at the star ratings is, if you're a one-star school, there's kind of a lot of holes that you have that, there's, there's some work that you really need to do. If you're a three-star school, you're kind of where you need to be, but you still need to be working to, to maintain that three-star status. If you're a five-star school, that's generally, you're, you're not going to hit all of these measures, there might be one or two that you're missing, but overall, you're going to be doing pretty well on most of them. For the high school, Carson Middle is a four-star school.
Carson High.
Or Carson High School is, sorry, is a four-star school, and Pioneer, with the way that the rankings are set up, came out as a one-star. Yeah, Nevada has a new website that they use to report these numbers, so if you wanted to look up how other schools are doing, you're, you're able to do that, if you go to NevadaReportCard.com.
I guess, I'm kind of wondering, I feel like the workshop last meeting and this meeting probably could have been combined into one, we could have, I'm just kind of wondering, why are we doing it two meetings in a row? You know, we could have done definitions and a little bit of data probably in one, is what I'm thinking.
So, so at the last meeting, the star ratings hadn't been publicly released yet, so if we, the state didn't want us to release them before the 15th, supposed to be the 15th, but because it was a Saturday, they were released on the 14th.
Okay, so sincerely, the team as set by, by Richard, and we talk about star ratings, are you, are we collectively and systemically going forward to say, we're all going to be a, we'll strive to be a five-star, all of our schools be five-star? I, I think, and again, I go backwards into the competitive world, whether it's playing football, baseball, we want to be the best, we want to be there the best for the sake of our kids. And if we're bringing our kids up, that's, we don't want to just be a three-star, like, yeah, C's okay, no. But for our kids, to give them the opportunity to rise, is that where we're going?
It may not look like it now, but that's exactly where we want to, we, we are pointed in that direction for all of our schools, no less. Why would we want to say we want to be less than that? The state has said that a three-star school is a very respectable place to be. It is a different measure than where we were with the AYP ratings. It's a lot harder to get to, but of course, we would want to be at a five-star school. It's like saying in the old AYP time, 100%. We want everybody at 100%, and people would question that, but what child are we going to say we don't want at 100%? We would never want to say that we would want any school less than a five-star. Do we have some marks to hit before we get to the five-star? Absolutely.
You know, one of the things I'd say on that same note is, while we're striving to get to that point, the indicator we should be looking at is closing those opportunity gaps. And so, you know, we have a number of schools that are like four, two, you know what I mean? That's a measure that we're kind of meeting the needs of those kids who are below grade level, and so, I think that just to be strategic.
Chad Hicks, for the record, I've been working with all the schools, and I can tell you the administrators are extremely good at looking at their data here in Carson City. I'm actually blown away at how they break it all down and all the data digs taking place. But there are strategies that you have to use in order to do well in S-Back. S-Back is a product of Common Core, and the core shifts have to be implemented in the classroom, and that's, we've already, we've started that work. A lot, some teachers are far, further along than others, but there are a lot of classrooms that I walk through, and I'm not seeing the shifts in action. Students need to be collaborating, teachers need to be doing less of the work, students need to be doing more of the work. They say now in American schools, it's where kids come to watch teachers work. They say now in American schools, it's where kids come to watch teachers work, and it shouldn't be that way. If teachers are burned out at the end of the day, it's because they're doing a lot of the heavy lifting. So we're taking a lot of these strategies, piece by piece, we're looking at them, I'm walking with administrators, and we are just narrowing it down to, like for instance, we're looking at text-dependent questioning, our text complexity at each grade level, are students referring to the text? Are students taking critical, are there structures in place where students are taking critical, are able to justify their thought process? If we are not writing, and what I mean by that, if we do not have writing systems and programs in place where they are practicing their thought process and how to justify their reasoning, there's no way they're going to do well on a performance task, on a S-Back exam. So we're, they, the principals, we just had our PLC, and we're, we're all on the same page. That's something I'm challenging them to do with me, and that is to walk through those classrooms, identify those actions taking place, and then wherever we fall short, or whatever we don't have evidence, what we don't see, we're going to rally support around those, and, and identify teachers that are doing a good job, and, and facilitate time for other teachers to observe those teachers. That's all going to be part of our instructional rounds process this year. But I've already started it with each of the schools, and they're moving pretty quick, to be honest with you.
So, and you know, and one of the things that, when I talk to teachers in the district is, they feel like there's a lot of people telling them what to do. There's a lot of coaches, a lot of administrators, a lot of people that are doing those instructional rounds that tell them. What I really suggest is, get a team of teachers to do that. Give them those metacognitive skills to go in and help each other. So if Joe and I are working together, I'm like, hey, you got to talk about the text a little bit more, you know what I mean? As colleagues and not an administrator or a coach coming in. So I mean, I think that we just need to bulk up on that piece of it, and help those teachers feel empowered to teach.
You're exactly right. It's the teachers observing teachers that's important. When we started this years ago in Washoe, it was district administration in those classrooms. It didn't help so much. The administrators got to see what was happening, but they couldn't provide much, you know, feedback. The power's in the teachers observing teachers, and then recognizing, I was at Mark Twain today, and I saw a teacher that was doing phenomenal things in the classroom. And so, I asked if it was okay if I identified her as a teacher to come see, and she said absolutely. But it's going to, the rounds are going to be the teachers, teachers coming together. We're going to do two schools in one day during our professional, our site leadership team, it's our, I always forget the acronym, but Site Leadership Team Day. And that's, what will happen is, we will identify two teachers from each school, and they will, they'll go and observe other teachers. And then, basically, all we're doing is scripting evidence, and then that evidence is transferred over to stickies, goes up under the core actions, so the administrators can provide that feedback to the staffs. If there's a poster that doesn't have a sticky on it, then that's obviously an area that we're struggling with. So I think in the past, what has happened, we did, the feedback part is where we fell short. And you're right, it's the how. It's how do we do this now, not the what, it's the how. So that's, I'm impressed with how they've already gotten started and moved forward. All schools are implementing writing blocks and, and looking at writing programs, so.
And I agree with both of you, but I would be remiss and probably wouldn't be able to go walk out to my car if I didn't correct the, instructional coaches are teachers, they're not administrators. Most of them don't ever have a desire to be an administrator. They're teachers first and foremost.
And I'm not arguing that fact, I'm just telling you what the teachers communicate when they talk to us. And so, that perception, regardless of how you want to classify them, that's the perception you have of your employees in the district. And so, that's, whether that's some fine tuning you guys need to do with your rollout and talking with the teachers or not, I'm just telling you what they're telling us.
Well, so far, it all sounds like it's moving in a good direction. Chad, I want to ask you, are you involved only with the elementary schools? And I say that because the training, the two middle school principals were there also. Are you going to be covering the middle schools? They didn't have stellar proficiency marks either, so.
No, I'm only K through five. We invited the middle schools that day because the information, the data they were receiving was consistent data. And so, and I think Mrs. Kima and I have, we've joined forces, and we've talked about what we want to see in, in all grade levels. And I think in future, the goal is to vertical, the vertical alignment, that's huge, really. We should, we should start looking at building the foundation in the K through five schools, and then, you know, having those conversations, all of us in all grade levels facilitating time to have those conversations together. So I was happy that they were there.
Okay, well, Sue, Richard, going forward, then, who's going to be doing the same with the middle schools as Chad is doing with the elementary? And like Richard said, the secondary schools have had at least more involvement to the point, and we should, to me, we should be seeing some substantial proficiency gains, which, which were not. So something still needs to be happening, and now.
Absolutely. Susan Kima, for the record, we did invite the two middle schools to that leadership day, because the data was the same that was being presented. Also, for me to work with both Mr. Conley and Mr. Sadler, to determine what parts of that, if not all of it, do we want to replicate for the middle school, as an opportunity for them to work on their leader, school improvement plan, but also to build the leadership with their leadership team, to have these deep discussions about what needs to change at their schools. Mr. Sadler's had his first school support team meeting, I was present there. Dr. Medina was at Eagle Valley's meeting, it happens to be during Mr. Stokes's team meeting, so that's why Mr. Medina, Dr. Medina was there. We have a meeting set up October 10th to talk about the secondary implementation specialists and the roles of the coaches at the middle school. My assistant has, is setting up a meeting to talk about Map Mastery Connect, and planning with Dr. Medina, myself, and the two middle school principals, the first, the second week of October. I was spending my last week with Mrs. Fuson and Jason Zona, so working on their plans, and then we'll be picking up the middle school right after that. So we, it's the two of us that will be working on that, and I'll be working with the high schools.
And would you also, like what Chad is talking about with the writing component, that we now more so have, and whether it's combined with the learning guides, we have essential questions, and there's a written, like Chad said, it brings things together, and the students do, or actually are forced in a way to bring all the standards together with that, in that writing component. So is that going to be part of the middle school?
That'll be addressed. Susan Kima, for the record, that yes, will be addressed. I see writing as a linchpin to put everything together.
And I, I mean, I just want to say that, and I understand Ron's reasoning, and I respect that, but I just want to say, a three-star school is an adequate school. So I mean, both of our middle schools are adequate schools, and so certainly, I know both those principals would want to be four or five-star schools. I know that the teachers in both of those schools would want the same thing, but I don't want them to feel like we're not appreciating their success. An adequate school means they're doing what they're supposed to do. There's room to grow, but there, it's commendable, the work they're doing, and so I just want to make sure that that's communicated as well.
Susan Kima, again, I do want you to know that that is exactly what the state is telling us. Getting to a three-star is, is a commendable act, but I got to tell you, our two principals are not happy with that. They want more for their students, and we're going to support them in order to be able to do that. You know, our teachers, our district has spent a lot of time building systems through the Race to the Top grant, and we're developing what our learner-centered systems are. But now, it's time, it's that, it's that implementation piece of the how in the instruction to bring that learner-centered piece alive. You know, teachers, we always tell the teachers to allow the kids to have productive, productive struggle. Allow them to work through problems, so they can become problem solvers, they can be resourceful, they can rely on each other to figure things out. It's kind of like what they talked about with the teachers doing all the work. We need to have the students do the work. And there have been cognitive shifts in our standards, and our MIUs have been rolled out, and if people didn't get it there, they're seeing it now with the materials that you purchase for them, they're looking at those materials and going, golly, this is, this is different levels, stuff that I need to be covering. And we need to allow the teachers to have that same productive struggle. We need to allow them to have time to work it out. We have the professionals in this district, we have skilled folks in our district, you heard Mr. Hicks mention that, I see that in the middle schools, I see that in the high school. And no, you know, and we talk about the teachers and the importance that they have to the student in the classroom, but we don't have successful schools ever without having an excellent leader. And so, spending time with our leaders, building that leadership capacity, to move from being a data collector to a data user, because we have a moral obligation, if we're soliciting, soliciting data from our students, we have a moral obligation to use that data to benefit them. And so, we need to allow our teachers to learn that, to have that productive struggle on saying, I have to give up some of my control, so my students can take this and fly with it. I have to realize that maybe some of the things I was doing isn't as high yield of a activity as, as some other things that other teachers are doing. We have to get these teachers out to see each other and work through that together, because they're the power. You know, we need strong leaders, but we need our teachers to help work with each other to figure this out. They'll, we expect our students to have productive struggle to learn, we're going through a phase where culturally, we need to allow our teachers to have that time to work through that, because they're our learners, they're also our learners. They're getting new materials, they're getting new MIUs, and in the elementary, it's, a lot of it's coming down. Science, it's its third year, math, it's its second year, ELA, it's the first year of the MIUs, next year will be new materials, the first year of the new MIUs for social studies, and we're close to the end of the systems piece. We have to get into the instructional piece, which is where our focus is.
I just have a question on the star ratings and how the state determines it, because I, I have a memory when it was explained to me that the state would, there would be so many one-star, so many two-star, three-star, four-star, five-star, that even if all the schools in the state met the levels of it, not all the schools would ever be five-stars or four-stars. So they have a, am I correct in that understanding, that there's a determined number that they're going to have, so if all the schools are improving, there's still going to be some that are going to be one-stars and two-stars? Is that correct?
Yeah, so there's not like a set amount of like one-star, two-stars, but there are like some inherent things, like when you look at the student growth percentiles, because they're using the median growth percentile for that growth piece, 50% of the schools are always going to be above, 50% are going to be below. So there's going to, theoretically, it's not possible for everybody to be a five-star, but it's not like a firm 20% at each level.
But then the target moves each year, the median moves each year. So a school could make growth from what they did the year before, but that might not be reflected in their year-to-year star rating, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct also. Yeah, the targets are increasing up through, I believe it's like 2020, and then the state will have to look at the model and see if they keep it there, or if they further increase
Well, I'm going to make a comment, going back to the training that was held a week or so ago. I was excited, I'm going to, Joe will have to listen to this, I was impressed with Michelle Cassiopoul. And I'll tell you why. She brought forward what the true learner, learner center model is. She said, we were talking, she says, every student is teachable and every student can learn. Is it easy to do that? She says, no. She says, I struggle trying to find out how many of my students learn, and I have to find a way to, to get to them. But she says, I'm not letting any of these students not learn. I'm giving them, like Chad says, I'm giving them the confidence to move forward. And, you know, I'm listening to her, I got excited. I said, God, let's get you involved in this leadership group here. But that was, that, and I think what Richard, the way he started this meeting, by everybody getting involved with that same attitude going forward, I don't think there's anything that can, that can stop the school district, but can stop the school district from providing the very best education for every student, not just for some. So, just a comment, I just wanted to make.
That's a great statement. I mean, that, that's it. You know, in the teacher evaluation system, it says, every student, do you believe every student can learn? Maybe not at the same rate, but can you believe that every student can learn? And it shows up in different ways. So when you have teachers like that, that say, I don't care that they don't know how to spell their name, I don't care, because that's my job to get them to spell their name. I don't care if they only have so many site words, and they should have twice as many by that grade, because you know what? That's my job to do. When you have people doing that, then the, then the shifts, the cultural shifts, you know, those are the kind of attitudes towards that cultural shift and the cornerstone of what we want to be as a district. That's what we want to cultivate. That productive struggle, you know, it's, it's challenging, it can make people feel uncomfortable, but if we, we allow them to work together on how, it's going to come through clean. They're going to come through really clean for our students, they're going to come through in a really good, good, I guess, the outcome would be raising the star ratings for our schools, but the, the real meat of this is benefiting students. Yeah.
And Chad Hicks, for the record, I just want to comment, I learned something this last week, we were, I was reviewing with the principal, they were, when we talked about all children, how it's important to look at, at all children, these were the Level 1 students, and we saw where, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ricky, but we saw where some of them were scoring in the 70th percentile, and we were celebrating, we thought that is outstanding. I mean, they're making growth at this particular school. But then, we realized that they were not over that Level 1 yet. So I don't know, they're 70th percentile, yet they weren't over that Level 1, and so I don't know if that was their, if they, if it was because of their peer group, they were scoring high, but still the proficiency level wasn't quite high enough. But it just means that we, if we lose, if we don't focus on them, we won't ever bump them over to the next level. So that's, we can't, we can't forget about them.
For the board, regarding school improvement plans, which is a requirement to share the board, share with the board what the schools are doing to improve, between now and the December board meeting, they will, there will be principals, at least two principals at every meeting, sharing their plans. Some will be in a workshop format, some will be in individual presentations, like what we did with Fremont and Empire last year. You'll see them back October 9th, a year in review, and they'll be able to go over their specific plans. But that's what we've been working on with the principals, Mr. Hicks in the elementary, Dr. Medina, myself with the secondary, and they'll be able to share those plans in small groups throughout now and through our, our December meeting. So you'll see principals at every meeting from this point forward.
And I've mentioned this before, so Chad, just maybe for, benefit for you, just so you know where I'm coming from, I think Sue hit it on the head. We've, we've built the structure, and now it's time to get to teachers, you know, make sure the teachers have the tools they need, and they're getting in front of these kids, and they're, you know, they're teaching them in this effective way that's going to help them, you know, gain these higher levels of learning and whatnot. But as we're doing this, we've really overloaded the teachers with a lot of data, data entry assessments, and I think it's really, and I'll tell you, some administrators and teachers agree and disagree with me, but I really think it's important that we try to shift the balance a little bit, so we're getting, you know, more time teaching, really, probably more important than that, doing the interventions, targeting these kids that really need interventions. And the lesson, you know, the lesson planning to me is like the third leg of the stool, and that can be done. and that can be done after school or whatnot. But during the school day, teaching and doing interventions is so key. And we have our teachers doing so many important but other things and they're not getting enough time to do that in many cases. And I know some of it is training, getting the teachers up to speed, but generally speaking, that's really what I'm hearing from, from teachers, coaches and administrators that I talk to are saying, you know, those are the key things. We got to find a way to increase that percentage of time. I don't know how we do it, but I think that's, you know, those are important pieces. I'm curious what your take is on that.
Yeah, Chad Hicks, for the record, I, all my walkthroughs, I, if there's one thing that I really don't like, it's when technical things get in the way of instruction or they're taking, consuming all of our time. I used Mastery Connect years ago as a building leader and we were, all of my teachers, we were happy to have it because we didn't have anything. And we had a four-page document that every time we met a PLC, we were hand scripting the results and then discussing next steps. I, I don't know if it's that it's everything coming together at once. I wouldn't particularly blame a program that unless, I mean, if we're providing all of the PD and support that they need, so that's an area that I want to really focus on. Those teachers that are struggling, are they getting all the support that they need? Because the most important thing is to, is to really make sure that whatever standards we're teaching and, and the schools I've been in, we focused on, and I think I shared this with you, four days of instruction. And that's all they could really do is really focus on those standards during those four days. And then if, determine how do we, were we effective? And then having those discussions around that. We're never going to move our schools forward without those discussions. If we just rely on MAP and we rely heavily on MAP here, it's, we're never going to move forward. We have to, we have to be tweaking, we have to be modifying, we need to have those discussions and modify instruction along the way. I've sat in some tremendous PLCs where some of the grade levels are phenomenal at it, but others are struggling and I think it's more the technical piece. So I don't, or they're just struggling with, you know, they're not as savvy with the technology. And so that's on us. We need to get them the supports and we've discussed that. But we can't, we have to have some way of looking at student results in a, in a much more informative results, in a much more timely manner, because it's, if not, it's not informing instruction. So.
We need to make sure that we, like with Mastery Connect, rolling that out, we're, we're now at the compliance stage in many places. We need, we need to know that. Anytime you ever roll something new out and make it mandatory, you start off in that compliance stage. And so what we need to do is watch it, nurture it, make sure it goes to faith-based, because we want people to believe in it. We want people to believe and understand that it's formative use will help them make instructional decisions. And so like as Mr. Hicks was talking about, it's not supposed, it shouldn't be ever about the tool. We want to make sure that principals are there to support their teachers, removing distractions, moving unfavorable, you know, unfavorable practices that don't get results. And so by asking the teachers, you know, where are you at? Take their temperature in the process and designing support and PD around it to get past those technical pieces, because it needs to not be about the tool. There always is going to be a tool, whether it's paper or technology-based, there's going to be a tool to help the teachers look at data. What we need to do is keep thinking and talking about the practice. And that's data-driven dialogue, honest conversations, no shame, no blame around the data, no excuses. And just getting those teachers to be able to talk about those kids.
And I think that part of the problem is that, and I talked about this with my teachers, is that it's like the perfect storm. And so as educators, of course, what we're caring about is the progress of our students. And every single teacher, you could sit down and they'll tell you the measures of growth they've had with those kids. And I think that unfortunately, we're also in a system, in a time in education where we have to do the data pieces. And so part of the professional support that we need to give our teachers is the understanding that yes, they're overwhelmed, but we also need to find a way to make sure that they know that part of these things are requirements that are out of our control. You know, I mean, you guys not only have to report to the school board, but State Department is requiring these pieces. And from there, the state is providing them to the federal government. And so we can only, we have to find a way to kind of find that happy medium and support everybody with our obligations, but also support our people.
Yes, we want to support, we want to be able to leverage our systems and support the cornerstone of school culture, you know, safety and trust, collaboration, which if we can get to collective efficacy, give these teachers time to repeat, practice, repeat. I mean, that's what's great about America. We can, we can, we can do this over and practice and keep working at it. And then also the bottom line is the culture of commitment to providing a better education for our students.
We're getting near the magic hour.
The witching hour.
Yeah. But is there anybody, any in the, in the audience, Richard, you want to come forward and join in the conversation? Gosh, anybody, you know, just feel free to.
While people are rushing the mic?
Yeah.
I just had a general question and I'll just use since Seelager's the first page. I just don't know what it is. If you look at academic achievement and you just go across to, to the middle of the page, there's a percent above cut and then a percent district. What am I reading? What does that mean to me?
So that's the fancy way of saying. That's the fancy way of saying the percent of kids that are proficient. So the test has a cut score. So if you're above that cut score, you're proficient. If you're not above it, you're not proficient.
So, so, and, and I, I understand that, but then what is the percent district? How does that, how do the two columns relate?
So the first one would just be Seelager. The district would be all the schools in the district.
So it's still, it's still a percent cut. It's just a percent cut for Seelager and a percent cut for the district.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, I said, oh, Richard.
Richard, for, for the record, I've attended quite a few school board meetings now. And I think the piece that I see missing is I haven't seen a lot of input from the teachers. Not a lot of questions from the teachers. Not a teachers have, not a lot of teachers have attended. And I think they haven't attended because they're, they may be fearful of what they have to say. But I think we, the board really needs to hear what the teachers feel they need to be successful. Because there's been a lot of talk about them being overwhelmed and they are. But what can the board do and the school district do to really help them do their job better? And I think that we need to hear from some of the teachers. And I don't know how we go about doing that because a lot of them are afraid to come forward, I think. But we do need to hear, or you guys need to hear from the teachers to see what they have to say and how they can improve and what they need to improve. That's all.
And I think you, we've talked about this before and whether it's reality or perception and it's a combination of both maybe. But hearing from the teachers is, you know, it's just as important as hearing from the coaches, the administrators, from the executive staff. I think that's really important. And I think when we talk about teachers that are doing it right, you know, getting maybe a group of those teachers together and, you know, having to, it's also easier to talk in groups. Maybe you get two or three of them that come here and say, you know, here's what we're doing. And maybe we're even at different grade levels, but, you know, the general theme of what we're doing is working. And maybe that's something we can do is we can see if we can get some of those, those folks to come to the meetings. Because I do think a lot of times it's, you know, they're, everybody's, everybody's trying to get to the same place, but we all have different perspectives. And it's interesting to hear everybody's perspectives, especially the teachers, because in the end, like you said, they're the ones we need to, to buy into this and make it happen.
Well, I think in any organization, you have to get to the people who are in the, for lack of a better term, in the trenches. You've got to know what they need to do their job. And right now, I don't think they really have a good understanding of the support they can expect from the school. And they're all, like I said earlier, overwhelmed. And I've talked to a few teachers and I know that they're kind of afraid to come forward to really express the pressure they're feeling because, for obvious reasons. And they are in the trenches. And I think if the board heard from some of the teachers, then instead of just from the administrators, and there's nothing wrong from hearing from the administrators, but the teachers need to be heard too.
So, and you know. And one of the things, and obviously I know a lot of teachers from when I used to work in the district, and one of the things that I think we need to encourage them to do, and what I encourage the teachers to do is to come forward. And as a professional, if you're advocating for your profession and your job, then, you know, you have to, you have to stand up. Sometimes I've had difficult conversations with people and it's not easy, but that's part of the job because we as board members can't always give the information of the anonymous few, because how can you go off that? How can Rich and Sue really take action when, you know, am I just a crazy board member making something up? Or is this truly a concern of the 10 teachers I talk to? And so at a certain point, we also as professionals have to advocate for education and that has to be in public because we're a public body. And so that's, that's kind of something also.
No, I agree totally with that, but I do think it's important. And, and you're exactly right. I think there is a hesitancy to come forward and they need to, you know, if they have some kind of concept of how things can be made better, they need to come forward and express those ideas.
Okay, Richard, thank you. We're at seven o'clock, but I just want to just wrap this up. Where Richard started, you know, right at the, at the top and where you're going to get everybody from top to bottom, systemic, means everybody's involved in this. Teachers, everyone has, has got a part in this, but starting with, you know, just the understanding of what the learner center model is and how it helps kids. And if the teachers want to come forward and say, no, that doesn't help kids, then we need to talk about that. Because I, well, many of us have done research across the country, but yeah, it does help. I've used it in teaching at the community college. It's, it does help. But it's the understanding of what it is. And, and that's where I think Richard is now taking, we're coming back to him. He's our only employee, so he's, he's set the benchmark. So getting that information to the principals, ISs and the teachers, what it is. The instructional, your second point, the instructional information, knowing where the students are. Yeah, with Mastery Connect, we got to know where they are so we can help them. And, and that I think is good. And then that third area of assessments and standards, you know, using the ACT tool that we have, I, I think it's, it's all here and we can involve everything and we want to hear from the teachers. It doesn't make sense. Or is there something else out there that's magical we don't know about? So anyway, we got to wrap up at seven o'clock. Thank you all. This is only the beginning and we'll, we're just going to keep at this.
And I just want to say thanks to Ricky and Chad. Two weeks in a row, I know that you probably have families that would like to see you at six o'clock. So I appreciate you being here and taking the tough questions from us.
Good luck with that Chuck E. Cheese fight.
And we will take a, maybe a five-minute recess before we start the regular board meeting. meeting. Okay, well, now, call this, the school board meeting to order, and we're now in the regular scheduled business part of the school board meeting. And with that, we'll go to item, agenda number three, adoption of the agenda as submitted. And so.
Second.
Okay, and do we have the people from, everybody's, okay, so, all right, then we're good to go. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any comments from the audience that want to change any of the agenda items?
Let's see, none.
Seeing none, all right. Agenda item number four, a superintendent's report.
We have both.
Oh. Paul and Vera?
Hi.
Okay, motion carries. Agenda item number four, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. It's my pleasure to be with you this evening, like to welcome our guests and members of the audience. I'm going to make my report short this evening, given the length of our agenda, but I'd like to remind trustees and also members of our community that tomorrow evening, over at Carson High School, in their library, is our first community PLC. We have some special guests who will be presenting information tomorrow regarding educational funding in the state of Nevada, and we'll hear from them this evening as part of our meeting. We will begin our community PLC at 6:00 PM, and it will go until 7:30. And I would also just like for you to maybe write the following dates down as we remind members of the community about our remaining community PLC dates. So after our meeting tomorrow, the next one will be on November the 28th. The third meeting will be February 27th, and the final meeting of our year will be on May 1st. And as you know, the community PLC is structured to assist us as staff and trustees in meeting the goals, the objectives, and the strategies of our strategic plan. So thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. That's my report.
Moving on to board reports and board member comments, and we'll begin, we'll begin with Carson High, and that's Ryan Lawler.
All right, so this coming Friday is going to be a home football game against Galena. Following that, Monday, October 1st, is going to be Professional Development Day, resulting in no school for all students. And that coming Friday, October 5th, is also going to be an away game at Bishop Minogue High School. And during school, there is going to be a homecoming assembly to address and prepare the student body for the homecoming theme and the week. And the homecoming week for Carson High School is going to be October 8th to October 13th. And that's about it.
Jase Kramer, Pioneer High School.
Hi, as you know, my name is Jase Kramer. I'm from Pioneer High School. I'm a sophomore, and I just want to tell you a little bit about what Pioneer High School is doing and what we've done. So our attendance at the school is important for success at Pioneer High School. Our ADA for one month was up from last year. We held our back-to-school night on September 18th. There was only a 29% parent participation. Hopefully, in the following years, we can get a better turnout. We're excited to welcome a new science teacher into the Panther family, Ms. Steinkrass. She starts on October 1st, and will be replacing Ms. Martinez. Our, one of our PE teachers, Mr. Hendricks, a teacher at Pioneer High School, started a partnership with the local gym for our PE students. We will be participating in the ACT by practicing in our online classes, as well as our other core classes. For all the students that are interested, there will be a construction day field trip on September 27th. Students check in with the office to see if you can still sign up. And then lastly, on October 4th, at 9:00 AM, Join is coming to Pioneer High School. Join provides educational and occupational training for individuals seeking careers, financial stability, and personal success. They work with students to help them find jobs, get into short-term vocational trainings. Join also teaches soft skills. This is a great program to provide transition services to all of our students. Oh, my bad. Lastly, on October 10th, at 6:30 PM, our JAG program will be having their annual INI ceremony to induct and install the JAG students. And that's it. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you, Jase. Good presentation. Moving on to more members, starting with Don.
I have some announcements from Principal Zona and Vice Principal Cowan over at Al Seeliger Elementary. Today began the Seeliger Stroll, and that's where teachers visited other classrooms and offered feedback during their PLCs. The plan is to do this once a month with teachers eventually identifying an area they want feedback on, and also identifying, identifying areas of strength for others to come and see. Also, October 2nd, at Seeliger, they start the Pirate Club. And those are identified students who will be supported in English language, ELA, for an additional hour three days a week. And lastly, I mentioned it last time, and I'm going to say it again, put it on your calendar, Saturday, October 13th, 26th Annual Pumpkin Patch. Come and get your pumpkin over at Seeliger. And that's going to be from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM on that Saturday. October 13th Pumpkin Patch. Thank you.
Mr. Brown at Fritsch Elementary School wanted to let everyone know that the Charleston Wrap PTA fundraiser is going on, so if you are in need of some holiday gift wrap and other things that are in the catalog, go find your favorite Fritsch student and place an order. And also, I just wanted to thank the high school. I attended the National Honor Society induction ceremony last week, and it was a really nice ceremony.
Yeah, I think several of us were there for the National Honor Society induction, and it's always a great ceremony. I, I received an email from one of the officers, who I'm sure contacted several of us and everybody in attendance, but I let her know that, you know, I've, I've attended four or five of them in a row. It's, I really think it's a, it's a first-class production. The kids do most of it. And just, you know, it's great to see, you know, just serious students there, and, you know, from all walks, really all walks of life, you know, athletes, kids that bury their faces in the books, kids that you'd be surprised are on it. You know, but seriously, what a great group of kids. It really, really is. Wanted just a couple of things from the high school. My usual, if you're a senior, start paying attention to scholarships. The SCOOP is out. It's several pages long, and there's lots of opportunities, so you can't get a scholarship if you don't try. And you'd be surprised, once you kind of get your mechanism in place, it doesn't take long to apply for these things. Senior projects are underway. I think, what do you guys call it, the letter of intent? A lot of students just submitted those for their projects. And then Mrs. Fuzon wanted me to mention that October 2nd through the 5th is Carson High's Week of Respect. On October 2nd, just to give you an example, there's a Say Hey Day, where it just talks about how some people go through their whole day, and nobody, nobody really ever says hi to them. And so this is a chance, if you're walking down the hall and you see somebody, say hello. And when you're an adult, that's easy to do, and when you're a high school kid, sometimes not so easy. You know, but it's just getting kids to, you know, maybe look, look above their phone and say hi to the person next to them. Wednesday is Upstand Yourself, is how it's spelled here.
Getting hip there, Mr. Brown.
Yeah, good luck there. My daughter would argue with you. Respect Each Other Day is all about making sure that everyone has a safe and supportive place to learn. Thursday is Keep It Fresh. It's a chance to show that CHS matters. You know, keeping, keeping the school clean is basically the theme there. And Friday is Get Your Blue On. Everybody has blue in their closet. I don't realize how much blue I have until I do some workout at the prison sometimes, where you're not allowed to wear blue. We all have a lot more blue than we realize. But anyway, it's just getting kids to pay attention to their school and their, and their peers, and I think it's a great idea, so, you know, hats off to Carson High. That's my report.
Mike? So, good things happening at Boarderwick Bray. We, they had Assemblyman Al Kramer come out, and they, he spent the day with the STEM coach, so hopefully he learned a lot about what they're doing, and will advocate for our schools in the next legislative session here. They are enjoying Walk to School Wednesdays. I guess they just call it Walk to Wednesdays. Am I right? No, what is it called? Walk to School, okay. Well, they're, they're enjoying doing that. And then next week, they have their Jog-a-thon. So October 2nd, the kids are practiced, warmed up, and ready for a good Jog-a-thon. And I spent the weekend, a good part of the weekend, with Mr. Stokes at the Family Engagement Summit at TMCC, which was, was, it was a good day. I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't real happy when I woke up Saturday and had to drive up there, but I think we, it turned out well. We were well represented. Carrie Pryor did a session that was well-received, and as always, makes Carson City looks good. So that was a good day.
Thank you, Mike. For Eagle Valley, there's, there's one, one major announcement, and that's the, the request for donations for a new digital sign at the school, or outside of Eagle Valley. The, the electronic sign died. And what Lee is asking is, is, you know, support from the, from the community. Total cost of replacement is $20,000, which is pretty significant, but it's, the electronic sign kind of ties the community in to what's going on in the school, gives the students, you know, a little bit of, you know, information going forward, the parents, there's information they can glean from the sign. Anyway, let me just tell you, to date, there's been two businesses, Justin Keggins Dentistry, who has donated $1,000, and the Allison McKenzie Law Firm has donated $500. So if there's any other individuals or businesses listening to this, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity to get involved with our schools, and particularly Eagle Valley. And with that, you can contact Mr. Conley at Eagle Valley, and there's a phone number, 283-2600. So, and with that, I would just, just add on the National Honor Society, it was, it was a great evening. You know, you see these kids, and it's, it's a true reflection, the demographics was very reflective of what this community is, and that was, that's nice to see. So, anyway, with that, we'll, oh, Stacy, Stacy, geez.
I've won, thank you very much. I attended the Pioneer Open House, too, and even though you only had 29% parent participation, those parents got full attention, the staff and the teachers, and it was pretty impressive, some of the demonstrations, and the English teacher here that gave me a demonstration was really well, so. I thought it was well-attended enough so that those people could get that one-on-one and get in those classrooms, and, and the teachers were really good, and the hot dogs were good, too, so. And then just an update on NASB, we did close our applications for our executive director position. I'm told we have 22, and the people are looking at, or the committee to look at the applications will be on Friday afternoon, after the executive committee meeting. So we'll be able to bring some stuff, hopefully, to the joint meeting, Laurel, to, we'll see how it all goes, because we haven't worked with a consulting firm before, so we're not really sure, and our website was down the entire time that this happened, so I'm a little nervous about how the process actually worked, but hopefully I'll have a better update for you next meeting. And then we're coming into the home stretch, where November's conference is coming up, and I see that you've all signed up, and I appreciate that support. I think that's going to look really good for, for Carson and, and the awards banquet, and being able to say goodbye properly to Mr. Swirzik for his service. So that's my update.
Agenda item number six, association reports, just.
Good evening, President Swirzik, trustees, administration, and Renee back there. Tonight, I would like to announce a special day coming up in November for the ESPs in the district and the nation. In 1987, the NEA called for the creation of a special way to honor the contributions of public school support staff. This November 14th is the recognition of the education support professionals in the nation. This occurs during the American Education Week. The title ESP reflects a growing pride in the essential role ESPs play in creating great public schools for every American student, from instructional assistants and paraprofessionals to office workers, health and student services employees, and food service workers, from custodians, maintenance workers, and bus drivers to security guards, technology specialists, and skilled trade workers, and mechanics, elementary libraries, and crossing guards. These support professionals provide invaluable services that enable students to learn, excuse me, in a positive, supportive environment. We are a big part of our schools and a big part of our communities. Everything we do is for the kids. We must work as a team to improve education for all students, no matter what we do for a living. Every ESP on staff should be treated with respect and the knowledge that they are a valued member of this, our schools. The bottom line is that we're not in this job to get rich, we're in this job for the kids, and it doesn't matter what role we play, the job is about teamwork. So remember, Wednesday, November 14th, or any other day of the week, to tell an ESP thank you for being a part of the education system here in Carson City. So it was just a little rah-rah for all of us support staff here in the district. Thank you.
Thank you for what you do. Public comment. If any of you in the public would wish to come forward and speak on any, any topic related to the schools which is not on tonight's agenda, just feel free to just come forward right now. And seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Agenda item number eight, the annual report for the Carson City School District Family Life Committee for the 2017-18 school year. Sheila.
Good evening, School Board and District Office. Thank you so much for having me this evening. What I'd like to do, my name is Sheila Story, and I'm the chiefess for the Carson City School District, and I'm also the chairperson for the Family Life Advisory Committee for the Carson City School District. Each year, I come to present to you a report of what the Family Life Advisory Committee did last year, and how many times we met, and what we got achieved. So first, we, and I believe this came in your, your board packets, it's just a list of the current members of the committee, which is Christina Schilling, but I believe it's now Christina Wagner, she's our teacher, Whitney Times is our counselor from Carson Middle School, Anne Dankrith is our medical, she's a nurse at Mark Twain Elementary School, Chris White is the pastor of one of our local churches, Mary Covington, Jen Chapevsky, Candace McDonald, and Christina Peterson are parents, and Gabrielle Covington is our student member at this time. So last year, we met five different times, and we had a great group of individuals. We had between five and 14 individuals attend each of our meetings, and they really gave a lot of good input, a lot of good ideas, that type of stuff. It really was a really good, productive group of individuals, and we had a lot of good, healthy discussions, exactly on what was appropriate and proper for our health classes throughout this school district. And below is a list of everything that we reviewed and approved. We first approved, of course, our rules and procedures, and then we had our health teachers come. We had Jen Menefee from the high school, we had Angela Ma from Carson Middle School, and we had Bonnie We had Angela Ma from Carson Middle School, and we had Bonnie Preston from Eagle Valley come and talk to us about the permission slip that is sent home to their parents for all those students to sign in regards to information they might receive within the curriculum in the classroom that might be more of a sensitive nature. And the parents were asked to sign a permission slip, so then they would have permission to view videos that would be presented within the classroom. That had to do with family life curriculum. And then, we went ahead and through the Carson City Health and Human Services, they asked us to review Making Healthy Choices. This is a series of videos, of 10 videos, and we did not get through all of them, but we're going to continue this year in regards to different videos that looked at STDs, growth and development, that type of stuff. And we did approve the first one here, STD video. And then, we went ahead and teachers at Carson High School asked us to view different videos that they would like to use in their classroom. One was reproductive system overview. The second one was female reproductive system 3D. The third one was fertilization, and the fourth one was human reproduction and childbirth videos, and they were all very good, and we did approve them. Very short in nature, but very direct, and gave the students a very good introduction to what was to come within their health classes at Carson High School. And then, we had the middle school health teachers come and ask us to view some of their videos, and one of them was straight talk about sexting and messaging, and the other one was in the heat of the moment, making different choices about sex. And both of them were very good, and we approved those for our middle schoolers. Now, when we approve a video, we watch it, and we ask all the members of the committee to make comments in regards to, do they like the curriculum? Do they like how it was put together? That type of stuff. And then, we do vote on it, and all of those were voted and approved. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Yes. Were there many parents that objected to some of the materials?
You know, we always have, you know, yes, we've had a couple of parents say, you know, that just wasn't quite right, or, you know, maybe a little bit outdated, or it wasn't very culturally sensitive to all the different cultural backgrounds we have with our school district, and we had a healthy discussion about it. And there are some videos that we did not approve this past year, because we felt they just weren't quite appropriate for the classroom setting, and/or they weren't as culturally diverse as we would want them to be. So, yes, and we do listen to all of them, and I think we made really good decisions on all of these, and it was a great group of individuals. We had SSPs join us. We had other parents join us. We had other teachers from different schools join us. So we had a very healthy group of individuals this year, who really give us a lot of good input. Even though they weren't a voting member, they were still able to come and participate in the healthy discussions we had.
Questions, comments from the board?
So, after we have our sex ed curriculum, do you guys of the committee ever look over the high school and the middle schools' curriculum and what they're teaching?
A few years back, there was a textbook that we were asked to review and also give input on, and then also, that's what all the videos are. That is what they actually present in the classroom also. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, and Sue Kima, you can help out here if needed. We have approved all the sensitive subjects that they do have to cover within the classroom through the Family Life Advisory Committee before they can present them in the classroom.
That's correct. And just for your information, I'm looking at the middle school health teachers, and they send a permission slip home for this section of time with the students, and the parents have the right to opt out. And so, I'm looking at one teacher out of 54 students. Everybody said yes. Looking at another student out of all their 153 students, everybody said yes. And then, in one other school, we had one family say no. So that's kind of how the rate tends to be on average, as far as opting out or opting in.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, because that was such a big fight at the legislature every year, so it's just good to know that how our curriculum works, because we haven't had any pushback from our curriculum and the way that we're doing stuff with the opt-in and opt-out. So, congratulations to your committee for that, because that's been a real highlight.
The last paper I gave you is a list of all of the dates that were our upcoming meeting for the 2018-2019 school year, and I invite all of you or any of you to come and join us at our meetings and give input, and sit in and see how the meeting is conducted, and see what type of materials we review that possibly could be presented in the children's classrooms. Okay?
Your committee members, not much turnover?
No, not this year at all. We've, I emailed all of them. I asked them to stay on, and the majority of them did respond back to me saying, hey, I'd love to do it again for another school year. The term is for three years, so we do have a couple people who will be terming out next year if they want to re-up and retry. Of course, they're able to do that, and/or if there's other people who want to be on the committee. And last year, we had a very healthy list of individuals who wanted to be on the committee, and they're coming, and they're waiting for a position to be open.
Susan Kima, for the record, I want it noted as well that this is a communities committee. This isn't, this is one of those, while my office will lend support to the Family Life Committee by ordering materials and putting things together for them, this isn't something that district administrators sit on and run. This is per the legislature, our parents and teacher community committee.
Well, Sheila, thank you, and thank you for what you do. You do many things in this school district, and this is one more, which is good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, agenda item number nine, report of the types of services provided by the Carson City School District by the Northwestern Regional Professional Development Program for the 2017-18 school year. Sue and Kirsten?
Thank you. The Northwestern Regional Professional Development Program is the professional development arm of our state, of our Nevada Department of Education. With our great vast area of our state, it doesn't make sense for the Department of Ed to have house professional developers, because they'd be on the road all the time, because of going from the rurals to the large communities. So therefore, the legislature has set up that we have three regional professional development programs. One is located in Clark County and serves the small districts around Clark County. The second one is in Elko County and serves the rural districts. And then, Kirsten Gleisner, to my right, is the Director of the Northwest Regional Professional Development Program here for our region, which serves Washoe County, Carson City School District, Douglas, Lyon County, Churchill, and Sturry County. Districts commit staff members that are paid through the RPDP budget for services, and those representing our district are Jackie McCune, she's been here before as a support to content areas, as well as Robert Ma. He is recently, in this past year, now serving as a professional developer with the RPDP under Kirsten Gleisner. So, that's on the ground to support teachers. I believe that the governance, well, I serve on the Governance Board, which is representation from each of the regions, and we meet up to four times a year. We get updates from NDE as far as what's going on to inform our work. We work collaboratively. We work approved budgets. There's also something called the Statewide Coordinating Council, where superintendents serve, and with them, between them and NDE, they determine budgets, the goals for the regions as far as professional development. For example, with the rollout of the Nevada Educator Performance Framework, there has been a real push for the RPDPs to support districts in helping teachers and principals understand the new evaluation model, and that's been a very big support from Kirsten and her team. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kirsten Gleisner to talk about the data that you have in your packets.
Thank you, Mrs. Kima. Can you hear me? My own? Okay. All right. Thank you, Mrs. Kima, and thank you, committee members, and Sprinton Stokes, for having me here today. It's dangerous to give me the microphone to talk about the Northwest RPDP and our work, because I am so proud that I could talk all night, but I will keep my comments as parsimonious as possible. A couple of pieces of information to support what Mrs. Kima was describing. Just so you know, the three RPDPs try to work together and be as consistent as possible so that we have a consistent message across the state and across our regions. So we follow professional learning models that are based on research specifically of Dr. Thomas Guske and Dr. Laura Desimone. So these are people that have gone in-depth behind professional learning, and so we stay as close to research-based models as possible. We also follow and use the professional learning standards that are put forth by the Learning Forward, which is our national organization, our conference on professional learning standards. We are also required to collect certain types of data, all three regions, and then we collect that data and produce it every year in an end-of-year evaluation report. And so, I will now turn to the specific information about Carson City that you have in your packet that is pulled out from that report. One of the first things you'll see on the first page is required by NRS and given to us by our statewide coordinating council. It's also based on the five levels of research behind Guske's research, and is meant to report out on basically satisfaction with trainings. You'll see in this particular report this year that there were high reports back to us from Carson City in particular about opportunities for interactions and reflections on the part of our educators, both administrators and teachers, which, as we know, through cooperation with colleagues and so on, helps to deepen learning. Also, the other high level, or high area was that educators reported that they would go back and use the knowledge and skills from the workshops and trainings in their classrooms or in their professional duties. Another requirement has to do with collecting data on the number of educators that we serve both across the region, and then specifically here in Carson City. You'll see that we hit an unduplicated count of 317, give or take the one that didn't sign in here and there, but we do collect this data very religiously, if you will. And then, you can see that we have a duplicated count that doubles that. So that means that all of these educators that came at least once, maybe came a second time, or some of them participated a third time. And then, I would say that when we say that they participated one time, it doesn't mean necessarily that they came to one training on one day and they were done. We really try to develop longer types of embedded workshops that support over time. So when we say they came once and they were participating in something that they were involved in, it could have taken several months, or a year, or several sessions. The next piece of information is not required, but we collect it anyway, because we require all of our facilitators to self-report their hours, and so that we can get a general picture of how much time is spent in planning, how much time is spent in interacting, both at the district level and at the regional and at the state level. On the second page, though, you have some lovely donuts. I like these rings. The first part is a required data collection, and so we will report out on the type of service that we provide. In this case, you'll see that there are three main types of service that we collect data on. The first one is instructional training, and that was the majority of our services in Carson this past year. So that could be workshops, that could be small meetings, PLCs, that type of thing. But we also did a certain amount of observation and mentoring, as well as consulting. In the final donut, colorful, most colorful one, you'll see the focus of services that we provided. And in 17-18, Carson City focused mainly on our Nevada Academic Content Standards Support in Literacy and in Math, almost equally, as a matter of fact. And then, we also did quite a bit of support for our Nevada Educator Performance Framework, the NEPF, and that's mainly administrator support. We also provided supports in computer education and technology, and then our updated social studies standards, and that's getting a lot of traction these days now with the new updates, as well as the new computer science standards. And then, we also did a variety of work in science, STEM, culturally relative pedagogy, and leadership. We have a number of National Board Certificate candidates here in Carson now, so we're starting to build a small cohort and hope to go further with that in teacher leadership. Beyond this data, I would just point out also that the Northwest RPDP also contracts with an outside evaluator. In fact, each of the RPDPs has an outside evaluator as well. And so, we contract with someone up at UNR by the name of Dr. Bill Evans, and I just mentioned this because he helps guide our data collection and analysis, and he also oversees additional data collection that we do that focuses on impact, on the impact of what we do in our work. So to that end, we use a case study model, where all of our facilitators are engaged in a deeper study of at least one major project that they're working on, long-term embedded professional development. So we always collect formative assessment. In other words, along the way, we collect exit tickets and information back from our participants to tell us about their needs and their depth of understanding, so that we can adjust as we go, to adjust to their needs or their understanding, or provide further supports or resources. But we also collect data from students, from our teachers' students or student data where it's available and where it's appropriate. And then finally, we collect what we call post-reflective data, which gives us information about the extent of our educator learning, and it, that tells us how much they have learned, where were they when they began, to what extent have they learned certain concepts, et cetera, and what increases in efficacy can they tell us about. And then, we report this data to Dr. Evans, and he helps us perform statistical, I can never say that word, tests on this information, and that helps us understand where our highest impact is, and also areas of need where we may need to focus or refocus. And all of this is published in an end-of-year report. So that concludes my overview, and I'll answer any questions if I can.
Questions? I do, I have, you know, reading through this, and like you said, training focused mainly on the Nevada Academic Content Standards and Literacy and Math. And then, I look at your donuts, and it's fine, but minimal observation by you to see if whatever instruction you were giving was actually, you know, passed along in the classroom. You said you talked to some, Susan's, I don't know how many students you talked to. I mean, and I'm going back to our SBAK scores and the content, okay? And does something more have to be done by your organization? Do you work with our, and I'm trying to make this constructive, but do you work with, who do you work with? You work with teachers? Do you work with the administrators, our ISs? How does this work?
Thank you for your question. I would say all of the above, and also to add to your information, we are, there are only 13 facilitators that provide professional learning across all of our six districts in our region, and Mrs. Kima told you which districts those are. They're all trained and, they have expert areas, and then they also have additional expertise areas, if you will. So, we do what we can. I wish that we had enough people to be able to always go in and do observational follow-up in every one of our trainings. As it is, we're able to provide training, sometimes some observational follow-up. We do collaborate as much as possible, so we're not coming in, but we're working together with district personnel and ISs. We've worked a lot with your STEM coaches, for example, here, as well as Carrie Pryor and any other instructional coaches that you do have at the sites, to try and spread out that efficacy, if you will, amongst the leaders that are embedded in schools, so that we can work more individually with teachers and get into classrooms and observe more. But you can see, number-wise, we can't do a lot of that. We do as much as we can. I hope that answered your question, at least.
Just to ask you, I mean, what, do you think the results are, you know, when you talk about impact, do you believe you're having an impact?
When I look... When I look at our overall collective information, I know that we are having impact in the areas where we have presence. Let me say it that way. Have we, are we able to work with every single teacher and every single principal? No, we are not. But, we do the best we can to provide expert information. Our people are all highly trained and they're very, very carefully chosen. I know Mrs. Kima has sat in on the interview process. So, we choose very carefully people that have really good background in their content area and their ability to work with other educators. So, I can say with confidence that where we have a presence, we do have an impact. Can we be everywhere? Regrettably not.
And I'll just say, you know, personally, I personally work with somebody at, you know, through your organization. I know my teachers are working. So, I mean, it's when you're working with them, it's very effective. And so, but like they said, there's only so much of them to go around and so, as an administrator, you kind of have to take that knowledge and also become part of the team that's observing that and rolling it out at your staff.
So, are you going to make any suggestions for changes at this upcoming legislative session?
I would say that it's a consistent conversation.
But, based upon the impact with what you're talking about as minimal resources, what is it that you're going to, instead of, you know, just saying, "We need this and here's the reason why." We do as much as we can, but we're not showing, you know, many results. I don't know. I don't know how you approach this, but if you've got something good, how do you make it better? And make it better for the students. Because you said you talk to students, what was there of the students you talked to? What was the feedback?
I would clarify that. We collect student data where we can. We don't necessarily talk directly with students. We work with teachers who bring results of their actions in the classroom based on the workshops or the trainings that they're receiving, but we don't necessarily spend a lot of time in individual classrooms with students. Did that answer that question?
Yeah, but would that be something that would help you as to talk to the end-user as to what you're doing, the instructional practices you're using? Is it benefiting the students? Are there, I don't know. I don't, I would think that that would be where I'd probably want to focus so I knew how I could improve.
Well, I think they do that by looking at that student data.
I know, but.
But, I mean, they can't.
Talking to a student.
You're talking about different levels here, too. I don't know if I'm getting your point, maybe that's why I get that look from my husband when he's frustrated.
And I think, and I think it goes back to what I was saying is that, I think, so this would be another layer of somebody coming in and telling teachers what to do. And so, what their focus is on building the capacity of our teachers and their skillset so that what they're doing in the classroom is impacting the student data. And so, that data should show growth and if it doesn't, part of that conversation is, "Okay, well, how could we tweak this?" And so, they're kind of there as the support for the teachers, not necessarily the intervention with the students.
So, for Susan Kima, for the record, two examples. With the Nevada Educator Performance Framework, they helped Dr. Delphin and I plan on how to roll out the professional development for the teachers and administrators. Now, moving forward, this year is the first year that the other licensed educational professionals, they call them affectionately OLIPs, which is your speech paths, your school psychs, librarians, counselors, social workers, and I'm missing one more. Speech, language, counselors, social workers, there are six of them. And so, there are other licensed educational professionals. So, what Jackie McCune has done with a team of professionals from RPDP is provided the overview and then worked with the, those specific groups for an afternoon, going through their rubrics, helping them with their self-evaluation, preparing them for goal-setting so that they can meet with their administrators and feel somewhat confident that they've at least seen the rubrics and have somewhat of a common understanding with their peer group as to what the expectation is. That's one example. The other example is Mr. Ma is working with our secondary technology folks. Mrs. McCune is working with our elementary technology folks, helping LeAnn Morris lead, training everybody on our computer science standards. And then, LeAnn Morris is taking that information with our six elementary teachers and our middle school staff and helping them redevelop their measurable instructional units for their lessons. So, our elementary teachers have now, are about to complete their first MIU with computer science in our elementary schools. But, that is because of the effect, computer sciences is different than computer literacy. And so, having an expert out there teaching the teachers, "What is computer science? What is the expectation for each of the grade levels? What can be handled? What are your resources?" That's been very helpful to us.
Okay, so, just for understanding, Jackie and Robert Ma are, no, well, let me ask it this way, are they Carson City District School employees or are they only employees of the Northwestern Regional Professional Development?
So, they are Carson City School District employees on loan to the Northwestern Regional Professional Development Program. They're paid through their budget, but there are contribution to the program. Each district, depending on the size of the districts and the number of folks, I think that like Clark County, they have a different number maybe than Elko area. I'm not sure about that, but it could be based on population. But districts contribute, Washoe contributes folks. Folks, we have Carly Strauss from Douglas County who represents that district, but they work interchangeably.
Just one final, I don't believe this, but one final question. What does Jackie do that is different than our ISs as far as the Nevada content standards?
So, what she does is similar. What the ISs do is work with, let's say, our STEM coaches. They work with the math, science, and they also are working with the technology standards as well to integrate technology into the classroom. They work locally, developing our local curriculum and then following that into the school and into the classroom with coaching. Jackie may have provided them the initial information on what does it look like to integrate technology? What math resources are out there to help teachers get to the proper depth of knowledge as far as their strategies? And then, the ISs can bring that back to their schools. Jackie works regionally. She works in all districts and her expertise being in the computer science area, like Robert Ma, he's responsible for Lyon County regarding computer science, training and that sort of thing. Am I correct there? But, he also works with us in the secondary level. So, they work regionally.
Just by way, as an additional example, so, for example, Jackie has a great deal of expertise in elementary math and in computer science, but she also knows what else we have available through the RPDP. And so, she has brokered, if you will, with other regional facilitators to be able to come to Carson and work with some of your ISs in literacy, for example, or in social studies. So, we're able to provide some, a modicum of expertise in certain areas that may help your on-the-ground people to go more in-depth with teachers in the classroom. So, we share a lot.
Now, we have Rachel Croft and I hate to just call you out, but I'm going to. She is a, you know, board-certified teacher who's worked with, support with the RPDP. And I didn't know if you have anything to say about that experience?
Okay, all right. But, we need to recognize her there.
Sue and Richard, is it worthwhile?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, oftentimes, you need a trainer of trainer models and these are folks that could come and be the experts to help set up our teams. I look at the work that Kerry Pryor does. She can't be the computer science expert and the new hire expert and the family advocate expert and the math expert and the social studies expert K-12. That's too much to ask one professional, district-wide professional developer. And so, by supporting and spreading out, we can divide and conquer and cover more ground.
I would also just like to underline that we are a state-funded entity, so it doesn't cost the district anything to have, at least in this district, two people step out from their role. It's actually more bang for your buck, if you will, because they both, at least here in Carson, both Jackie and Rob have a presence here and spend a lot of time working with your teachers as well as sharing resources, their resources out in the other regions. So, we pay their salary, we pay mileage, we pay materials as much as possible. We support with subs and with stipends, both for your district and across the region. So, I just want to make sure that that was clear, that it's actually not costing financially any money for your district, but you gain many resources from us.
And President Swirzick, for the record, Jose Delphin, Dr. Gleisner has been a great support for the NEPF. Sometimes, it's so perplexing that we have to do fact-checking between each other. We both attend the TLC meetings all the time and as we go through some of this abstract work and some of it can be quite stressful, it's good for us to be able to collaborate with the RPDP to be able to triangulate that and train our administrators in a positive manner. So, she's been really great for me.
One other point is that because the RPDPs are affiliated nationally, they reach out to the national math organizations, social studies, all the content areas as far as professional development learning. They can bring us back the strategies, the expertise, the content, what's happening on a national level so that as a small community in Nevada, we are actually able to reach outside of ourselves and know what's going on across the nation so that we, when we send our students, our teachers are well-trained, our students benefit from that, and when we send them out into the big world, they can compete.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, well, thank you for your presentation and I'm sure we'll be having more conversations. You're going, I say that in a way, we want to see the impact on the students and I don't think we've seen it yet, so.
It's an ongoing conversation because we have the same wishes.
Item number 10, the informational presentation from Fund Our Future Nevada. A coalition of student, parent, teacher, education partners seeking sufficient funding for Nevada public schools to provide appropriate and necessary resources needed for student success. Richard, are you going to start this?
I am. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Toward the end of the last school year, in one of our NASS meetings, I was introduced to the ladies at the table here who do indeed represent a group of grassroots citizens who are our friends. I mean, they are coming together to try to assist public education in a way that will hopefully modify, in a good way, the mechanism that funds public education. And I've had the privilege of hearing them speak and they have graciously come here tonight to make a presentation. Eventually, they're seeking the support, not only of the superintendents, but also of the trustees across the state in a way that allows us as a unified body to support their efforts, especially as they get ready for the legislative session. They've got some great ideas, really smart people who are working for them and it's my privilege to introduce them here tonight as they fund our future, hopefully, in the future. So, Amanda, Karen, I'm not sure who of you will start, but I'll turn the time over to you.
So, my name's Amanda Morgan. I'm the Legal Director of Educate Nevada Now. We're a statewide organization. Michaela is up here in the north. She's also with ENN and I'm based out of Las Vegas. Our claim to fame is that we were the folks that challenged the Education Savings Account Bill that was passed in 2015 and were able to prevent a lot of money leaving public schools and going to private schools. But, now we've set our sights on fixing school funding, you know, no small task.
My name is Karen Shea and I'm with Hope for Nevada and we are a parent advocacy group that formed in southern Nevada, but with the help of a lot of northern Nevada parents. And now, we're looking statewide because we see that the issues that are affecting all school districts are the ones that we really need to bridge communication with our state legislators on, that there's not just southern Nevada issues and northern Nevada issues, there are children's issues. And so, parents and community need to advocate for all students in Nevada and so, that's what we do.
I'm Michaela Tonking. I just started working with Educate Nevada Now as the Data and Advocacy Director up in the northern Nevada region. I previously worked with APA Consulting, which did the study, the last five studies actually, on school funding. So, I've worked with them previously and did this in other states as well.
Okay, so, Fund Our Future is a coalition of organizations as well as individuals. We are students and parents and teachers and administrators and we also, well. Oh. So, it's organizations and it's individuals and that have all come together for the same vision, which is that all students, north, south, east, west, rural, urban, in this state deserve to have appropriate resources and they need to reach their full academic potential, no matter where they are, no matter what they're coming from, and they should be able to graduate college and career-ready. So, our mission with our statewide partners is threefold. So, through Hope, when, as a parent group, we started talking to our legislators, we realized that most of our legislators don't have children in public school and that only about 30% of our voters are parents with children in school. So, we needed to advocate louder and be more informed when we speak to our legislators and also to help them understand that our children need three things, which is the state needs to develop and fully fund, of course, not immediately, but over a very specific timeline, a cost or evidence-based funding formula that is research and evidence-based and we will use that to drive what we need here for our students in Nevada. We also need to ensure that all of our revenues, like marijuana, like the IP1 room tax, any existing or new revenues that are intended to supplement, need to supplement. And we need to ensure that we have reasonable account. And we need to ensure that we have reasonable accountability measures, because we know that we can't ask for more money unless we have established that there is a recipe for success for our children. So what value does Nevada place on its students? Hopefully, this all will change. Right now, we know that we have the largest class sizes in the country. We know that we have one of the most regressive funding formulas in the country. We're one of two states in the nation that fund on historical expenditures. Of course, the Augenblick studies, we're probably all familiar now with the recent ones that have shown that we're about $4,000 below what our students really deserve. Teachers make the third worst salaries in the country when accounting for the number of students that are in their classroom. Of course, we have, we're at the bottom of all of the bad lists, which is unfortunate. We have a D in education, we have an F in education funding, we have an F in students' chances for success, and we're ranked 48th overall. So we have a long way to go, but really, we're at the bottom. So where else can we go but up?
So I'm going to talk about, you know, kind of how we got where we are. We have a funding formula that was developed in 1967. So this was the year when Elvis got married. So this was a while back. We have the oldest funding formula in the country. It's pretty incredible. Most states have revamped their formulas in the '90s, some recently in the 2000s, but we, 1967, we're just sticking with it. You know, what's the important features of this program is that, or this program, this Nevada plan, is that it fails to take into account the actual cost of educating students. So we all know that, you know, we're shouldered with state mandates, federal mandates, all, you know, safe and respectful learning, common core standards, and we're not making a judgment that any of these things are good or bad. If we feel like it helps students, that's a good thing, but we don't fund to actually deliver those services. So when you do that over the course of 50 years, and you keep adding more and adding more, I mean, we all know that what's happening in the classroom now is very different than what was happening in the classroom in 1967. But things haven't changed in how we fund schools. It fails to take into account the unique needs of student populations, ELL, FRL, GATE students. Those students are just not accounted for in our funding formula. We have some Band-Aid categorical-type programs that some districts get, some districts don't. You have to reauthorize them every, you know, two years, and they're pretty, you know, they don't rise with inflation. There's all these different things, but it doesn't meet the needs of all students, and it's certainly not embedded in our formula like it needs to be. And we don't keep up with actual inflation rates, and I get all excited about this point, nobody else cares about it. But, you know, we raise school funding based on consumer price index inflation, which is about 1.5% to 2.5%. True inflation that school districts are facing is closer to 4.5% and 5%. So based on that, we're already making less for our schools each year as we go along, just because of inflation, taking away all the increased mandates and all those other things. So it's really a recipe for disaster, and that's really how we ended up where we are right now. So we always hear about new revenue, right? We've heard about the commerce tax, or marijuana, or IP-1, and it's supposed to be the savior for schools. You know, we constantly hear that message, but the truth is, when you account for just the bad inflation number, the CPI inflation, our funding has remained flat for the past 10 years. The basic support guarantee, which funds, you know, 70% of the school district's budgets is what funds all the operations, that has remained flat. How does this happen? Well, it happens because when new revenue goes in, money flows out the back end. So the state's contribution to the DSA or the distributive school account actually decreases as new revenue sources are added to the pie. So it's not growing the pie, it's just kind of like pouring water in a bucket with a big hole at the bottom. So we end up with flat funding. It's really easy to, you know, advocate for a tax when it's supposed to support kids. So I think that's kind of the reason we always hear that these taxes are going to support our kids, but without kind of this lockbox to make sure that it actually supplements, we kind of end up with a situation where this funding remains flat. And, you know, I don't have to tell you all this, you all have seen, you know, the limitations of having, you know, inadequate funding. You know, you'll be facing, you know, a $5 million correction right now, so it's going to cause all kinds of, you'll have to make tough decisions. Should you increase class sizes? Should you get rid of certain programs? And these are things that districts across the state are facing. It's not a rural thing, it's not an urban thing, it's not north or south, every single district. With the exception of maybe some that have, you know, mining or local money, most of the districts are facing these kinds of issues. So that's why we really wanted to make sure that this was a statewide coalition. This is so critical, and we're realizing now, as we talk to legislators, how important it is to have your voice at the table. Because what we're already hearing from folks is, oh, you know, you can just kind of move some money around here, maybe, you know, the northern Nevadas, they're doing okay. So maybe if we just push it down south, and that'll increase the, you know, what's happening in Clark County, that'll improve achievement. We're already hearing that discussion, and that's the discussion that has gotten us nowhere real fast. So we really want to make sure that, when the session comes around, that people are understanding what's happening in these other counties, what's happening in the northern counties, what's happening in Washoe, what's happening in rural counties, what's happening in White Pine. We want folks to really understand the struggles that these districts are facing. So we're the only organization that's really focusing on additional funding, not redistributing the funding we have now. We really want to focus on new funding for schools. We're actively proposing a change to the Nevada plan, which I'll talk about in a second, and we're grassroots. So we're people on the ground, we're parents, we're teachers, we're students, and we're education leaders. So why coordinate? Why work with us? We're better, we're stronger together. This really has to be statewide, as I've already said, and I'll say it a million times, it's really, really important. It's important to have a clear message and to really be going up to legislators, helping them understand the issues that are happening, you know, having unified messaging, so, you know, it's, you know, what we often hear too is like, oh, well, it's just mismanagement. You know, districts just don't know what to do with their money. So really coming up and saying, look, here's, we're going to lay it out for you, we're going to be really transparent. It's not about these other issues, there's a core fundamental problem here, and we're just not getting the funds to function as a district. And we also need to provide legislators guidance and support. A lot of the time, it's not that they don't care about kids or anything like that, it's just they simply don't understand. So it's, a lot of it's just educating legislators on what's happening and just making sure that they can, you know, advocate for us when they're up at the legislature. And we're an unbiased third-party voice, which I think is really important. I think in the past, folks have seen unions come up, and it's like, oh, that's the union, it's self-serving, or that's just a district, they're just trying to get more money. So really having parents and teachers out there really sending this message, I think, is very powerful. What we understand is budget deficits, they're a result of poor state funding, rising costs. Like I said, it's not about mismanagement, you're not going to find, you know, this much money if you make cuts to administration or do these other things, it's just not there. Restricted use or categorical funds, they don't aid operations budgets, they don't solve everyone's problems, they're, you know, basically just a Band-Aid. There's been an increase in unfunded and underfunded mandates that take a toll on school districts, and new revenue sources don't increase the pie. So how to collaborate? So we'll be sending around, Superintendent Stokes will be sending around a resolution. We hope that you all will consider it for your next meeting. And just, it's all just about collaboration, helping us, you know, what good data can we give to legislators so they can understand the issue better? What messaging do you all want to get out there? How can we help get this message out, and how can we collaborate with you all to make sure that we're saying the right things that really reflect what's happening in your district? Obviously, being active at the legislature, letting people know what's happening. You know, we'd love if you'd join the coalition and help with community outreach, so these are just different ways that we can work together. And some of the things we've been doing, obviously presenting to a lot of different organizations, writing all beds, letters to the editor, press releases, getting this issue out into the public, a social media marketing campaign, and you can see some of the things that we've been pushing on social media, presenting to legislative session hearings, we presented to the Legislative Committee on Education a couple months ago with some formal recommendations, and then obviously talking to all the different districts, which is really important. So our official funding formula proposal, and this is really the bread and butter of what we're doing right now, we are pushing for the state to move to what's called a cost-based funding formula. So this would actually be a funding formula that's based on the actual resources necessary for students to achieve the state's standards. So really linking what we provide districts to what is expected of students and schools and districts. Right now, it's random, it's based on historical expenditures. So what did they spend last year? Okay, let's roll it up by inflation. That's really the only calculation. But if you're asking a district to have 20 to 1 student ratios, what does it cost to get there? Let's actually factor that in. If we want, if we believe there should be a counselor in every school or for every so many students, what does it cost to actually get there? And really kind of evaluating that, and that's a lot of the work that Augenblick is doing right now, and we think that that's the most appropriate way, and that's the modern way to approach school funding. Each district would be given an adequacy target, so this would be for that district to achieve that state's standards, for them to have the resources necessary, that's how much that district will need. Ends that guessing game, ends that, you know, oh, no, they don't really need it, or they're not really being truthful. You actually have it in front of you. That's the target. If you want to provide those resources, that's what it's going to cost. And then you move towards that target incrementally. It's not going to happen overnight, but you move towards it incrementally. Several states have used this model to modernize their funding formulas, and as I said, it just ends the guessing game, it ends the back and forth over whether it's really needed or not. I use Illinois as an example because they just did this. They just instituted a new funding formula this year. Hands all shaking, I'm getting, there we go. And what they did is they calculated their formula using, that's okay, using 27 different cost elements. So some of the ones I included here, reading interventionist, student activities, full day K, all these different things that they determined to meet the state's standards you would have to have in your classroom. Then they adjusted those based on the size of the district, transportation costs, students with IEPs, ELL at risk, and then they looked at actual inflation, regional inflation, and that's how they came up with their district adequacy targets. And what they found, if you look at, I think I have the map here, so the red is all the districts that were not at their adequacy target. So they were pretty far off. What they found is that to actually achieve the state's standards, they weren't doing a very good job. You know, there's some districts sprinkled in there that are doing okay, but most of them were pretty far off. They made some important commitments, which I think are pretty important here, and a lot of other states have done this. They've mandated dialogue between districts and the Department of Education, really eliminating the surprises when budgeting comes down, you know, like when special ed funding came down, it was a big surprise to everyone, you know, how come we're getting this amount? It doesn't make any sense to us. It's kind of eliminating that, and it also helps districts plan a little bit better. They committed that no district would receive less funding under the new formula, and this was so critical, because a lot of districts were really afraid that it's just going to shift money from one district to another, and I think that's a huge concern here too. So we think that's really, that hold harmless is really critical. And the focus on evidence and best practices to guide districts, so making sure that, you know, we're funding things and we actually think through, is the research, is the research saying that having this ratio of counselors to students, is it actually working? Is that, you know, has it been proven? I'm going to talk about some of the other.
So, like we said, there are so many other states that are doing this work. They've either been doing it since early 2000, or they're just embarking now. Oftentimes, states are starting this work because of a lawsuit. We're one of, less than a handful of states in the nation that has not been engaged in a lawsuit on this yet. But some of the states are working on it because they have these strong alliances in their state, like the Fund Our Future Coalition. So close to home, Utah and Arizona, and of course, Illinois, but there are a number of coalitions in other states that have been able to get this work done. And some of our members were happy to say, the Nevada Association of School Superintendents and school boards, and just today, we were signed on with the Nevada PTA, and then we just came from having the Washoe County School Board sign their resolution. So we're hot, hot commodity, and we'd be happy to put your logo up on there.
Oh, and White Pine.
Oh, and White Pine, and White Pine. You know, I think it's, it just, it adds that extra layer of comfort when legislators are hearing that it wasn't just the Nevada Association of School Boards, but if it's individual districts that are really taking this leap into this work together, I think that speaks a lot. So thank you.
Okay, well, first of all, you're not going to be a problem, I'm just guessing, you know, for signing on with you guys, but cost basis, over time, are you, as an organization, and if we join collectively, are we, somehow, money has to be increased, okay? And you use the word taxes, it's not favorable. You said 30% of the, our population may have children in the school, which means 70% may not, and say, what's in it for us? So what, do you have any suggestions for new revenue which would not be an imposition on people?
Well, during this session, what we're really pushing for is all the funding that has been supposedly dedicated to education actually be used to increase the pie, which is actually a pretty significant chunk. I think it's going to be about $350 million over the biennium for the room tax, and about $100 million, give or take, for marijuana. I mean, that in and of itself is a pretty, be a pretty big step. And folks tell us, well, you know, how are they going to fill the gap because they're using these for other services? And we say, look, you know, it was the education advocates that went door-to-door, getting people to sign those petitions and getting those things before, either on the ballot or before legislators. They did that hard work back in 2009 and 2016. You know, let other agencies go do that hard work. You know, it really isn't our responsibility to find yet another revenue source right now for them to use, and we don't even have the assurance that they're going to use it the way they're supposed to. But I think you're right. I think we will have to think, you know, beyond the session on, you know, we're going to need more than just that. We know that folks in the community are driving discussions on, you know, whether it's the property tax or, you know, retail tax, things like that. You know, we don't want to say, yes, we support that, we obviously would want to see the measure first and see what they're proposing, and that would be something we would run by the whole coalition before we supported it. But yeah, those discussions will be, they'll have to have, happen, yeah.
And I think one, especially the marijuana one, when you ask legislators where that money went, and they're like, we put $68 million of that money into the budget, but they supplanted it, they didn't supplement. So they're, if we hadn't had that $68 million for marijuana, they still would have had that $68 million in the budget, and that money would have gone somewhere else, because they didn't make any cuts because of it. But every legislator you ask, oh, we put that $68 million in the education, but they didn't, they supplanted it, and if you look at the measure itself, it says to supplement. And that has to be, I think that's got to be one of the biggest things to go look at and go after, because the voters voted it that way. People had an understanding that if that passed, that that's what was going to happen to that money. So as a voter, I feel like I was lied to, although I didn't, you know, but I'm just saying that, and the hotel tax one down in Vegas, that one's been going on for, what, 10 years, 12 years, and they've not seen any of that money. That's where it has to end. The legislators have to say, this is supplement, this is not surplanting.
So that, that total was $1.2 billion if we had been collecting that money since 2011.
And that would have been distributed statewide, even though it was only collected in Washoe and Clark, every district would have received, based on their enrollment, would have received a piece of that, and no one has.
And I think one of the things is, the voters support these things because it's for education, and let's be honest, education is our future. And so, yeah, it's tough to justify voting for a tax, but I think most people can do it for the kids. But one of the things I think that we need to do is make sure the voters know that that money's not going to what it thinks, because people say, well, we approved marijuana tax. They don't understand that it's not supporting the schools. And so in addition to the legislature, we have to make sure that the public knows how the system works, because it sounds great on news clips and when you see it in headlines, but the reality of what happened isn't what you're seeing and hearing.
And it'd be much harder to get other people to vote for more education taxes if they feel like they're putting a lot of money into it and not understanding why there's no changes. And a lot of it is because of the supplant versus supplement issue.
So, say, other than Illinois, are most states going on a cost basis to?
Most states have performed some form of adequacy study, so that can be an evidence-based study, professional judgment study, a successful school study. We've done it as well here. And most states who do it, about 50% who do it, will adopt some form of it. Cost-based is obviously harder to do because you have to come up with a plan. It's easier to do in this state since we have never revamped our funding formula since 1967. That's when it was enacted, and it has not changed since then. Most states will change theirs. We are one of two states that does historical expenditures, us and Nebraska. No one else has ever done a historical expenditure. And that's, I mean, all that drives is inequities. It's inequities from the first day that it started, and it just becomes larger and larger. And so, not, no, not many states fully implement a cost-based, but majority of the states who've done adequacy study take pieces of it. And most states have a better school funding formula in place. Even Mississippi has some form of a cost-based funding formula in place.
So what are you suggesting? Are we going for a full cost base? I mean, is this what you're suggesting, just going forward?
Yeah, I think, you know, we're suggesting that they used actual costs to develop their school funding formula. You know, we're realistic, it might not be a full adoption of Augenblick, but we'll push for that because we think that that's right for students. But yeah, yeah, I mean, we're pushing for a full cost-based funding formula.
So yeah, with a full cost-based, Maryland, Wyoming both have full cost-based school funding formulas. And most states do have funding formulas that are, like weighted school funding formulas, it's just their base may not be fully to what would be deemed as an adequate level. So it might be a little bit below, but they still have a weighted school funding system, and majority of states have one of those.
You mentioned, you know, educating the lawmakers and whatnot, but I get it, but that surprises me. I think they're educated. Part of me, honestly, I wonder how much some of them really care. So part of your work is, you know, is any of your work, would that involve, you know, almost kind of, you know, watchdogging, if you will? You know, making a public knowledge, you know, these are the lawmakers that support public education, these are the ones that say they do but really don't. I mean, is that part of your work, or is it just more behind the scenes?
Thinking like we're C3, how much can we do that? But, but yeah, I think part of it is that. And just putting on pressure, I mean, one thing we learned with the fight against the ESAs is that sometimes it just takes an email with a lot of people on that email to really make a difference. So, you know, and sometimes it's just having even 10 really active people show up at the legislative, parents, you know, that's why we'd like, you know, parents from Carson City, you know, they can make it to these legislative hearings and just make their voice heard. And it's very, very powerful. And I think a lot of, I don't want to call it public shaming, but, I mean, a lot of that happens in those committee hearings when people show up for public comment. As far as legislators being educated, I walked into this process thinking that they knew more than they actually ended up knowing. And they have a lot of different issues. You know, I'm not saying that they're, you know, they don't care about it or anything like that. But, you know, I talked to a legislator the other day that said, oh, well, northern counties are okay on school funding, right? They don't need anything. And, you know, when you hear something like that from someone who's supposed to know this, it was really disheartening. And I thought, well, you know what? We'll show you that that's not the case. So, you know, sometimes it's just misconceptions, and maybe they want to believe that it's all about, you know, Clark County. I don't know. But we, you know, if it's not in private conversations, it might be in public comment. And, you know, if it's really not moving the needle, having those backroom conversations, then we'll have to do something public, yeah.
If I might add, I do think that it's our responsibility to have the long-term vision for our students. Because we have assembly people that are in and out every two years, and senators every four. And a lot of that time, they're looking at just getting reelected, and they don't want to have the policy conversations. So we need to create a model that will withstand political whims or fluctuations, if you will, because there are always fledgling legislators coming in that we constantly have to re-educate and have to make them understand why it's important for them to care.
AJ, what's, you know something about money. I mean, what's your thought on some of this approach and, you know, where we're at as a state and where, you know, where we can go down this road?
AJ Fealing for the record. I think just one thing, so I've read all your APA works, they're very stimulating, reading. But really, it's really amazing. I think the first study was done in 2006, if that's right. You know, this isn't news necessarily. And the whole idea that when you're talking about adequate funding, I mean, the definition, and it was up there, that it's basically what you need to meet all of the expectations that are set in front of you. And we're $4,000 per student away. And that is an enormous amount of money. So from that standpoint, I think, you know, focusing on these two things and from a standpoint of a voter, voting for something and it not being what it was sold as, is really troubling. And I always mention that no lawsuit has been brought against the state of Nevada regarding school funding ever. And there's really not many states that have had that situation. So that just seems like a problem there. So the one, you know, talking about inflation and the costs over time, that 4% number, that's a number that I run with generally. When you look at our general fund revenues, and this is statewide, this isn't just Carson, Carson is actually slightly below this number, but in the last decade, our general fund revenues have increased at 1%. So the state will often say that, well, if, you know, the funds are made up somewhere. If you're not getting it in your local revenues, you're getting it on the state side. If you're not getting it on the state side, you're getting it on the local side. Well, when you push, go all in, all general fund revenues, it's been 1%. And that has not been reflected in our expenditures at all. So getting back to that problem and the sustainability, trying to keep up with those costs, it is incredibly difficult. So I've sat in on the, one of the professional judgment panels for special education that was down in Las Vegas, where they looked at, it was a great process where you look at, so given certain types of schools, different situations, what would it cost to provide services? And it's a really straightforward process that I think for the folks who are in the room seeing it, there's a lot of transparency to it, and there's not a lot of, there's no fudging or anything. What would it cost to do this? And so this whole idea of adequacy and what it would cost to provide some of these things. So I know that my counterparts in Clark and Washoe and White Pine were all, you know, parts of these sorts of studies and other people here in the district. So I think there's so much to support this cause, but as stated, it's a communication issue, and we certainly do our part. I've met with senators and our legislators in the last session responding to endless BDR requests for the impact of certain bills. But, you know, I think everyone has to kind of do their part. And given the study and given the economic recovery that seems to be happening, I'm not sure there's going to be a more opportune time, at least to make a case, at least for this simple part of, there are these taxes that were supposed to be going to education, and they clearly are not. So hopefully, that will be a message that's heard.
Are you prepared, or have you already done, to make a presentation of why the Nevada Plan is inadequate? I mean, you go back to 19, you say 1967, but a lot of people still remember Senator Azu got this thing going. So there's a lot of history that you've got to overcome also. So are you, how far along are you there?
So I have my long-form presentation, which is about an hour and a half long, where I really go into detail on the origins of the Nevada Plan, how its different mandates and the cost of those over time, and then the tables that distribute the funding between districts. And I think a lot of our energy in the past has been on that piece of it. How are we dividing this pie? Is the teacher allotment tables right, or is this right, or does that need to be updated? Not on growing the pie. So I talk a lot about that in my presentation. The Nevada Plan was born out of a big problem that was happening before then. It was called the Peabody Plan, and there were hundreds of districts across the state. And it was completely unmanageable. There was, budgeting was almost impossible, state budgeting was really difficult. So the Nevada Plan was kind of a way to simplify things. And it made sense to have, you know, each county is its own district and things like that. But 1967 Nevada looked very different, demographically and population-wise, and where the population is and was. So it probably made a lot of sense at the time. And actually, in the '70s, we were one of the best-funded states in the country, and we had very, however they had measured achievement back then, we were pretty much at the top of the list. But just over time, it just hasn't kept up with the changes in how education is delivered. So, but yeah, I do have, if you're ever interested and you want to be put to sleep, I can give you my long-form presentation.
You've addressed that and the challenges that would come about with that. Okay. As I said, I don't think you're going to have the next board meeting of us adopting or, I could be wrong. But I think it all makes sense, what you're doing, and there's a lot of thanks, you know, for you just taking that start of this. So how many people are actually, not organizations, but just people that are a part of this?
So last I checked, I know we had a couple hundred just individual members. So that would just be teachers, parents, students that went on. We have a pledge on our website. We say, sign the pledge if you support what we're doing. And then that's how we do kind of action items. So we'll send out an email to those folks and say, look, we're all going to this legislative hearing. The last legislative hearing they had, the interim Ed Committee meeting, we had, I mean, we took up two hours of public comment. So these are people that are really active, they're willing to come out. And we think that's more powerful. I mean, we love having organizations join, and I think that's really important. But I think it's probably even as important to have those individuals that come out that are just parents that care. So we're growing. That was an old number, though. We might be higher than 200 at this point of official pledge signers, but, and then we have, it just seems like every day we're learning that new organizations are interested in what we're doing. So we're hoping to grow that organizational number as well.
I think it's really great that you're bringing everybody together because so much you hear north versus south versus rurals. And, you know, from the days I worked at the Department of Education, I've worked with every school district, and they're all working so hard and care so much about their students. And it doesn't matter where the children in Nevada live, they deserve an education. And they deserve an adequate education. And so I appreciate the work you're doing as an educator, so thank you.
Any questions, comments from the board? Anybody in the audience who would like to join the conversation?
Mr. Swirzik, if I could, I have a question for the ladies. I come from the land of Maryland where, you know, lawsuits are kind of common, and neighbors to the north in New Jersey sue every other five years, it seems. So I was wondering if you had any research regarding modern education funding that is linked to student achievement, it's also linked to staff retention, maybe job satisfaction for those professionals in education, and also community satisfaction? Is that in your long form, maybe?
So I actually have worked in Maryland a lot when I was with EPA. That was a lot of our years. But, so I think actually Maryland is a perfect one to look at. They just created a new commission, they have a commission every five-ish, they did 10 years this last time, to readdress adequacy, and then they adopt the new adequacy formula. They're now trying to do a world-class system and take on like what Singapore and other countries do. But they have done a lot of work on how their staff and how they've retained their staff, which makes it way easier to implement a career ladder, which they've now started to implement. They do community involvement. They have community schools in Baltimore City, they have community schools in Montgomery, which is an interesting place to have community schools. But they do, they've created tons of partnerships with nonprofits to create these community schools. I mean, they have seen, their performance does really well. The increase in funding, every time they increase, you can see how their school performance has changed once they've fully implemented an adequate education. They've implemented it back in 2000, they implemented it again in 2010, they implementing it again now. So they are a perfect example of a state that has created a fully adequate funding formula and has seen successes both within their employees and within the community and within their students.
Richard, thank you for, you know, arranging to have this organization come forward. No, we appreciate this. Anything that'll help kids with achievement and success in life, and I think that's the key, the success in life. First, got to give the kids hope, and then what magic, you know, helps make that happen. So anyway, good, thank you for the presentation, and we'll, I don't know if we'll see you back in two weeks or someone will, you'll be back? Okay. All right, okay, thank you.
Mr. Swirzik, I would just add that these ladies will be at our community PLC tomorrow. And we will also be bringing back at our October 9th meeting the resolution for you to consider. I'll make sure that you each get a copy of that so that you can review it. And then between now and next meeting, you'll have an opportunity to research, study, ask questions, maybe with colleagues. Certainly, we'd be happy to chime in however we can to help you understand the process and the system. But, our thanks, ladies, thank you.
Agenda item number 11, discussion and possible action to designate critical labor shortages in the job positions of bus drivers and school nurses, and to allow acceptance of applications from retirees to fill the aforementioned positions as allowed under NRS 286523 for possible action.
Wow. Okay. Jose Adolphin for the record, trustee Swirzik, trustees, colleagues, staff. You know, if we had adequate funding, I wouldn't need to be up here, right? That was my first remark after the ladies came up. I thought they did a great presentation. So we are in desperate need of bus drivers right now. In fact, when I wrote this exact summary, I had one bus driver vacancy, now I have two. So with that, we have a struggle to find bus drivers. At least in the 10 years I've been here, it's been hit and miss. So I can tell you, within the last two years, we've definitely experienced quite a need to make sure we have enough bus drivers to run our routes, and right now, we don't. And I can tell you, being a supervisor over transportation, I talk to Ms. Fletcher every month, if not every other day, it seems, and she's running pretty ragged. She's driving the bus, as well as Scott McKee, who is her number two. And they're worn out, it's only September. So I'd like to be able to get your support to get a critical need position right now for a bus driver, and also for a school nurse. For the past four years, we've been needing an RN, so it's been pretty critical as well. So we're, we're just moving people around at this point in the RN situation to make sure that we are providing expert care for our neediest of kids. We tend to have had a little bit more increase in fragile students over the last 10 years since I've been here. And that's not decreasing. And a lot of IEPs, 504s, and things of that nature, where we have very sensitive students and families that are in need of that expert care. So that's my second proposal tonight, is to ask for your support to get some retirees that may be interested in either driving a bus or helping our healthcare situation in Carson City.
Just a question on the bus drivers. Is that two bus driver positions for the existing routes? Is that two bus driver positions for the existing routes?
Yeah, that's just to keep up.
Okay, because there are some overcrowded routes that the buses are running pretty darn full. And we probably need more bus drivers to add bus routes.
I would concur.
Well, talk to us about the RNs. When you say nurses, we're not LPNs, but we're just talking RNs. What is it pay? What is it that we can't attract the profession of nurses?
Right. I think they're neck and neck with the teacher shortage nationally is having a nursing shortage. So we cannot compete with a local hospital or a clinic that pays at least twice as much as we pay for school nurses. Now, there is movement to, as Mr. Wallace knows, to move the four-year RNs into the teaching unit. So we're going to eventually merge our four-year RNs, our school nurses, into the Teachers' Association, which will up their pay. But it's still, you know, I have a bunch of relatives that are nurses and doctors, and I can tell you, they can command much more. I had a retired nurse from the Bay Area that, when I was principal in a local district, was making $300,000 a year, folks. And she commuted every week to San Francisco. That's more than most superintendents make in a state. So when you're competing with salaries of that nature, or even just locally here in Carson Tahoe, it's tough to find RNs that can adequately do the job. So money is a big reason, Mr. Swirzik, to be honest.
But with the, sticking with the RNs, but even the, you know, the school year, we're not working year-round like you in the hospital. Still, we're not, I don't know. Sheila, you got any insight in this? I say this, I mean, all the positions are critical, and nurses are critical.
Sheila Story for the record on the chief nurse and the school nurse at Carson High. A couple of things. Historically, the Carson City School District has always had RNs at our schools. And I will tell you, they're a valuable asset to our school district. And yes, Dr. Delphin is correct, our increase in special needs population has skyrocketed. For example, last year at Carson High School, we had 46 daily appointments in the Carson High School Nurses' Office. This included medication administration, diabetic care, which is severe diabetic care, tube feedings, catheterizations, you name it. We're doing everything within our school districts. So, and this year, it has just increased at all of our different schools. Tube feedings that are continuous tube feedings, meaning they get a tube feed throughout the day, which means we have to have a nurse there to monitor that tube feed, to make sure if the line gets kinked, or it stops, or the child pulls the tube feeding out, or they start to spit up or throw up. We then have to stop the tube feed, correct the condition, and then start it back up again. So we do follow all physicians' orders regarding all of our special needs. With that being said, we also have increased number of students with medications onboard, increased diabetics, increased asthmatics, increased seizures, and also increased anaphylactic reactions. So a school nurse is critical in every school. For the past three years, we have been very fortunate to have Vicki Thomas, who is an LPN, a retired school nurse for the Carson City School District, cover Empire Elementary School three to five days a week because we have not been able to hire an RN for that school. With that being said, we have had five RNs interested in the position, one interview, and take the position. But when she found out the pay, she could no longer do it because she was a school nurse at the Washoe County School District for 16 years, and she was going to take such a huge decrease in pay. She could not do that, along with commuting to Carson City. And then we had another bachelors prepared nurse apply for the position. She was going to come from Anout, and then she found out the pay, and she goes, "There's no way I can take over a 50% pay cut." I went ahead and I judged the HOSA presentations last week up at the HOSA classroom for about 45 minutes. And one of the presentations, they did the most evidence-based research on how much an RN coming out of UNR was making. And they started at 53,000, okay? And most RNs within the state of Nevada are between 60 and 93,000. Our school nurses top out. Our four-year RN nurses top out at 49 to 50,000 a year. So we just don't have RNs applying for the positions because they're taking such a huge decrease in pay. Now, with that being said, you are correct. We do only work nine months out of the year, and our paychecks are spread between 24 paychecks. So you look at our hourly rate, it's pretty good. But we're just not up there where the other RNs are making. So no one is applying. So it's been very, very difficult. In regards to coverage of the schools, I have had every single nurse in my district cover one to two to three to four schools per day for the past three years. And they're getting very, very tired. And I can't afford to lose any more nurses. So I'm hoping they'll stick with us and hang in there, and hopefully this critical need will help us out in getting more RNs to help cover these positions and the schools. Any questions?
Well, how many RNs do we need?
Well, we currently need an RN at Empire Elementary School. We currently need, well, Pioneer is covered two days a week with a clinical aide on Tuesdays and Thursdays only. And then we have a couple students here within the district that do require medical needs throughout the school day in regards to a continuous tube feed, also a student with a trach, and we do give them coverage through that.
So that's a great question, Mr. Swirzik. Right now, we need one. But if we have a kid that comes into the district that is somatically fragile that they need a RN immediately, that could happen tomorrow. So as Sheila said, we're getting kids that are a little bit more fragile each year. And they're not just kids in elementary, but middle and high school as well.
So Jose and Sheila, I understand, you know, it's important to have an RN at each school, but just because I'm not a medical professional, should we be opening this up to LPNs? Or legally, is there, you know, we really need an RN and not an LPN? And I say that only because, quite frankly, of what we're paying them.
We'll take whoever applies at this point, to be honest.
And just, you know, just on that mark, LPNs can do a lot of the work along with the two-year RN. Some of the restrictions that we have is we're, school nursing is very interesting because we follow the State Board of Nursing, and we have an advisory opinion which follows the NRSs and NACs of exactly what an RN can do and what a qualified individual can do. So our clinical aides are considered those qualified individuals, which can do a lot, but they are, unfortunately, their hands are tied in regards to a lot of the medical procedures. LPNs also can do most of those procedures. The things that an LPN cannot do is they cannot train, delegate, or educate, okay? And a lot of the times, they can't do a lot of those rechecks, like recheck of vision, recheck of hearing, recheck of scoliosis. That has to be an RN only. But LPNs are good, and we'll take them.
Any other comments, questions? This is an action item, so I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees pursuant to NRS 286-523, in light of the efforts made by the district to fill the open positions of bus drivers and school nurses as outlined by Dr. Delphin today in the document submitted, we are making the findings required by the statute and adopt the written fundings made by Dr. Delphin in Nevada Public Employees Retirement System (PERZ) forms presented to the Board of Trustees and based on those written findings. Declare that the statutory provisions provided in NRS 286-523 have been met that there is a critical labor shortage for bus drivers and school nurses for a period not exceeding two years.
I would second it. And one of the findings, I think you said fundings rather than findings. So I just, that correction.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you, trustee Cassiopoul. That was longer than my presentation, that.
Moving on to agenda item number 12.
Discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD policy 543, Safe and Respectful Learning Environment, Free from Bullying or Cyberbullying. This is second reading. It's possible action. Sue.
Susan Kima for the record. There weren't any additional suggestions from the board or from the public for policy 543. Therefore, I recommend board approval.
I'm just wondering, on the first line there, we're inclusive. When I read that, it just reads weird to me in accordance with, I think we're missing something. It doesn't seem to flow.
What if we took the word out?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. We didn't need it, but that's why I'm asking you. If you were, there was something you were meaning to put in there and you didn't, or if maybe that was an edit that just didn't get all the way cleaned up.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Questions?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees adopt the revision as presented with edits and approve September 25th, 2018 as the revised date on CSD policy 543, Safe and Respectful Learning Environment, Free from Bullying or Cyberbullying.
Motion's second. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries. Discussion and proposed changes to CCSD policy 516, Class Rank. It's the first reading. Sue.
Susan Kima again for the record. This policy, 516, was reviewed with key high school stakeholders on September 17th, 2018. The document was found to have current language. The only change was to address the board in a way that was consistent with the other board policy. At this time, I entertain any suggestions from the board.
It's pretty brief.
Yes, it is. We were working, we're working on the updates for graduation requirements, and this is kind of an attachment to that part of the work, which we'll be bringing to you later.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the board?
My question is, class rank even by grade point average? Is that by weighted grade point average or the non-weighted grade point average? Does it matter here? Or would that be in the regulation?
It'd be in the regulation. Because it is, there is a weight that's added. The schools do both because the colleges don't take the weight. Yeah.
Okay, if there's no further comments, anybody feel free to come up here.
Jump in.
Okay, if not. Discussion and proposed changes to CCSD Regulation 516, Competition in GPA and Class Rank. This is for discussion only.
Susan Kima for the final time tonight. The only addition to the Regulation 516 is that the addition of the weight for dual credit. This change was supported by the Jump Start Advisory Committee, and we didn't realize we didn't have it in this particular document. So just updated.
So, you know, and I know last, last May, I think Mr. Stokes and I emailed with a former student about this. Are we communicating this to the students? Because it seems like the last couple of years, there's been a couple surprise students. So I just, you know, that process is the high school's job, obviously. But as a trustee, you kind of listen and advise them to meet with their school administrators or Mr. Stokes. But I'm just, I wanted to make sure that these kids who are taking like the Jump Start program, the AP program, kind of understand how it all plays together when you look at the different rankings at the end of their high school careers.
And so Mrs. Fuson and myself, we've worked through that with the advisory committee and with suggestions from parents and staff. And so that's why there is a valedictorian for the Jump Start students and one for non-Jump Start students. Because of the way, if we would have made the weighting equal and the Jump Start students had double the classes, there was some inconsistency there. Okay. And just remember, too, every student is expected to be met, every counselor is expected to meet with their students when they review their academic plan each year, and they should be going over these things with them.
Okay, Sue. Thank you. Then we'll probably see you back here next board.
Absolutely. Thank you. Wouldn't miss it for the world.
Okay. Agenda item number 15. Discussion and possible action on selecting a topic for the 2018-19 Carson City School District Board of Trustees sponsored American Citizen Essay Contest. Richard?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As you know, the American Citizen Essay Contest is now an institution within our school district. And it's something that we do annually. And as you know, it was established to commemorate, or at least keep in our memory, the events of 9/11. And in your packet, you have a document that has identified what our previous topics have been. There are also some suggested items, and it would be the responsibility of the board tonight to select the topic so that we can put the process into motion and encourage our students to take part in this writing contest.
Okay, Richard, I think we have some duplications going on here. Some of this, as you go through your list, each of the board members, I think there's three of them that have already been just recently selected as the item for the essay. I mean, we, I guess we could go back and do them again, but maybe we'd want to keep something, you know, different going forward. So I'll just start with this. Anyone have any suggestions going forward? I know Don did last, last year, but anybody else? You got anything you want to?
You know, one of the things I think about is, in our current political climate, I think both sides of the aisle feel a little bit stifled, and there's people that are afraid to speak out. And so I think something about freedom of speech and the bravery to advocate your beliefs, which is, you know, one of the foundations of our country, would be really timely and appropriate.
So how would you put that, Mike?
If I had, do I have to have a wordsmith right now? So I would just say, you know, freedom of speech is, you know, one of the cornerstones of our democracy. How, you know, and it takes bravery to advocate for a belief or thought. You know, I would need a little bit more time to really kind of make it sound. I'd be happy to do that if you'd like to.
Okay.
I like where Mike's going with that. I think with some wordsmith thing, that's going to be a good topic. I kind of really viewed the same thing in item six, "This land is your land. What does it mean to me?" Because when I read that, I think that indirectly covers that, you know, advocating for your beliefs, you know, and, you know, do you or don't you feel like this land is truly your land?
Well, I do like the idea of taking it back to, I've liked it last couple times, someone in your life who's a hero and why. But I'm wondering if you could do it to think about Patriot Day. Think of someone in your life who's a patriot and why. That might be, or what, or maybe even a what does it mean to be a patriot, which kind of ties in some of the other questions. Number 10, which maybe you don't need. What's the significance? I don't know.
Yeah, I'm going to agree with, yeah, I think we should, yeah, develop that. I was going to go and just talk about the American flag. What does it mean to me? I mean, we say the pledge every board meeting. Kids say it in school. What does it mean to them? Does it mean anything other than reciting a little speech? Anyway. All right, let's get down to this. How many want to go with the freedom of speech?
I'm just wondering how we're going to word it as a question.
Yeah, it'll be important.
Yeah. And I think it's similar to 11 that we just did, which was in 2016. In your opinion, or no, not 2016. Where did we do that one? I saw it. In your opinion, what is the most important freedom of, in the Bill of Rights?
2015.
Okay, that was 2015. So I think we need to make sure that we word it. And I don't have any ideas on how to word it right now. Because I don't want to do just freedom of speech. What does it mean to me? I feel like it should maybe have a little more.
So I'm just thinking, so, freedom of speech is a cornerstone of our democracy. But sometimes it takes bravery to advocate your beliefs. Explain a time you were brave and communicated what you believed.
I like that.
You got to give me a minute sometimes.
You come up with stuff like that, we'll give you a minute and a half.
I'm quick, but sometimes I have to think about it.
So we want to put that?
Did you get that?
No, you're going to have to say that again.
So, freedom of speech is the cornerstone of our democracy. But sometimes it takes bravery to advocate your beliefs. Describe a time you were brave and communicated what you believe.
And I would just say it's a cornerstone.
Instead of it?
Not the, not the cornerstone.
I wrote A. So I agree with you.
And I almost wonder on that, if, you know, we're saying, describe a time that you were brave. I don't want to discriminate from anybody that maybe, maybe doesn't feel like they've ever been brave and done that. So maybe you or someone you know was brave.
Okay.
I just want to make sure we're not inadvertently isolating anybody.
Another spin on that, Mr. Walker, Mr. Cassiope could be an example from history. There are some wonderful examples, just even thinking of Mr. McCain, who recently passed away. There's some, there's some great connections there with history that might be utilized.
So I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve, as a topic, freedom of speech is a cornerstone of our democracy. But sometimes it takes bravery to advocate what you believe in. Describe a time, describe a time that you, someone you know, or a historical figure was brave and communicated their beliefs.
Okay, we have a motion?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Motion in a second. Any comments from the audience, the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Motion in a second. Any comments from the audience, the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda Item Number 17, that's the informational items. And I think the, the one thing, Richard's already stated, that tomorrow night's meeting, the community PLC, Carson High, 6 o'clock. No other comments? We'll move on to requests for future agenda topics. If there are, you know, I would like one to be, but it goes along with class ranking a little bit. I'd like an update, a presentation on the Jump Start Program. This year, how many kids have elected? How do we market this to let kids know? What's, just an update on the process, and maybe we can get somebody from WNC to come in, see, is it, we know it works. But, and Joe, you've been involved in a lot of this, I just like it, just a formal, formal update on where we are and how we're progressing.
And if we could, if we can, because I know it's hard. But I think it's great to hear, I think it's good to hear from WNC, probably good to hear from somebody at the high school. If it's possible, I'd love to hear from a student who has moved on. And ideally, if they didn't just move on to, not just moved on to UNR, but UNR is an easy path for all your credits to count. Love to hear, you know, a student who may be moved on.
Out of state.
Out of state, and what their experience has been.
Okay, we'll put that together.
And I know that's hard to find, but.
Well, just Sarah Lobzinger is our, not only is she our math champion, but she's also our Jump Start champion at the high school. So we'll put our heads together and talk to Scott Morrison and see what we could do. Thank you.
Okay, any other future agenda items? No. Okay. Without objection, we're adjourned.
I was going to say, let's get this show on the road, Ron.
He scared us.